Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of March 24th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it's streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank SMC Executive Director Mark Sauer, as well as Shrewsbury Public Schools IT Director Brian Leroux, who assists with all of our meetings. This evening, I would like to announce that our community had a tragedy this past Friday with the death of a mother and daughter who leave a surviving son and brother, who is a member of our school community. And out of respect for the family, I would like us to start this meeting with a moment of silence in memory of the deceased members. Thank you. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so in the future, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12 MA.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening? Nothing? Thank you. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Let me also follow by, again, expressing on behalf of the school district, our deepest sympathies to the surviving husband, father, and son, brother of the deaths that occurred this past Friday. The, I want to express my appreciation to the crisis teams at Shrewsbury High School and Sherwood Middle School. The deceased girl was not our student, but certainly has many acquaintances and friends who do attend our schools. And of course, we're doing our best to support the brother who does attend Shrewsbury High School. I also want to express appreciation for the counseling personnel who have assisted the school where the girl did attend, in helping them with the, in the aftermath of this tragedy. It's, again, very appreciative everyone who's reached out for assistance. And anyone who is looking for assistance can see on our website a variety of resources for support. And we encourage you to look there, or always feel free to reach out by phone or email to the school district, and we'll connect people to places that can be helpful to them, including our own Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services here in town. I also want to mention there was another news item that yesterday morning, there was a bus accident. It was an AA Transportation Bus. They are a transportation vendor. And it was a bus that was transporting students from Al Hamra Academy, and was involved in an accident on Route 20 by the Avalon Apartments in the, I guess that's the southeast portion of the community. And I was really very appreciative, the first responder personnel from fire and police did an excellent job assisting the students and managing the scene, which of course caused major traffic gridlock on Route 20. Want to thank AA Transportation, their owner Ron Earnline, and their manager, who works directly with us, Sean Lainez, were both on the scene very quickly. And AA is a local business here in Shrewsbury, who is a great partner for us, and their response on this was outstanding. Nora Lee, who is the principal of Al Hamra Academy, who also came to the scene to attend to her students. And of course, Mr. Collins, who immediately went to the scene, as well as Karen Isaacson, who has been serving as our transportation coordinator this year, and she's taken on that role as part of her responsibilities this year. It was a very, very immediate and coordinated response, very much focused in ways that we have practiced. We've done these kind of drills before. We're very fortunate that none of the students or the driver had serious injuries. There were seven, the driver and seven students were transported to the hospital for further evaluation, but thankfully, no major injuries. And again, it's, appreciate everyone's responsiveness to the accident. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first time scheduled appointment this evening will be an update on the school's response to the pandemic, as well as plans for reopening for full in-person learning.
Thank you. So I will start again with our key messages, that we continue to be focused on the health and well-being of our students and families and staff as our top priority. Our focus, of course, is to create a safe school environment that prioritizes everyone's well-being and enables high levels of learning for all. And we continue to look at the guidance that we receive from the state, whether those are public health authorities, or the school, the Education Department at the state level, as well as monitoring the latest information from medical experts. We'll hear from Ms. Freeman in a bit. And Ms. Freeman and I just met again with the medical experts who've been advising us this past week in order to get the most updated information that we can, in terms of what is the appropriate kinds of mitigation strategy we're putting in place, and looking at the data, of course, regarding the pandemic. And in regards to that data, we've had six weeks, six cases this week to date, which brings us to 392 cases in our hybrid model since the beginning of school. We remain, as we have for now, I think just about a couple of months, only seven cases traced to possible exposure in school. We did have one case this week so far. In the remote program, there's been 33 total cases to date in the families or the students or staff who are not physically working on-site. As a reminder, the data dashboard is updated every weekday. We also provide the previous week's case count when we post that on Monday. You can see that we did not go in the best direction this week, whereas we had three weeks of very low case numbers in a row, nine, 11, and seven. Last week, we had 21 cases. We're hoping that's an anomaly, and we're just moving back down. And so far this week, it's been pretty moderate numbers. We're hoping that's the case. Then no, again, we tend to see cases that are connecting to exposures that have happened outside of school in some fashion. A couple of cases where, or maybe where there's no known source, but based on all the contact tracing we're doing, there's no other connection to anyone who would be in their immediate area here at school, where there'd be a clear connection. So again, we continue to not see transmission happening at school, but obviously, the virus is still present in the community. And it's something that we ask people to continue to take the kind of precautions to minimize the chances, even though things are opening up more, even though more people are getting vaccinated. We need to still be vigilant in order to try to keep those case count numbers as low as possible in our schools. This is the statistic from Johns Hopkins that we show at each meeting. The overall Massachusetts rate of positivity compared to two weeks ago, when I grabbed this data, has ticked up to 2.23 percent. Still well below the 5 percent benchmark that is looked upon as a community marker. But hopefully, that will again continue to moderate, and it remains to be seen what will happen with that out in the communities, as there has been obviously more reopening based on moving to the next phase of the state's reopening plan. This next line graph shows the 14-day positive test rate, which the state publishes every two weeks. So this is based on the latest data published last Thursday. And you can see that remained pretty low. This is specifically for Shrewsbury. And that was, I just have to, eyes are getting older, so I need to look at this a little more zoomed in. You know, running right about the last three weeks, 2.3 percent, 2.42 percent, 2.18 percent. So as of this last benchmark, the lowest it's been in Shrewsbury for some time, which is a good news story. As far as our staff and student ratio, that has stayed remarkably consistent. I think since we started reporting this two or three meetings ago, it has remained at essentially 83 percent of the cases in our hybrid being, so this is all students and staff, including remote. 83 percent of the cases being students and 17 percent being staff. So that's been a very stable ratio. And you can see the numbers that we're up to now, 354 students, 74 staff who have been positive. In terms of cases by school, of course, with the high school being our largest school, and also having relatively more cases, that continues to be the outlier. But you can see school by school, you know, fairly consistent numbers across what you'd expect based on the student population. The next slide is actually what I haven't done before, just showing the past two weeks by school. So you can see the distribution of the cases most recently has been pretty consistent, that they've been across different, different schools in the district. The next slide is the overall cases since the start of the year on a grade-by-grade basis. And that, you know, obviously evens things out, because we have some schools that are smaller, some schools that are larger. So you can see on a grade-by-grade basis, although we do have more at the high school, it doesn't, it's not dramatically more than we've had in some other grades. And the next slide is actually the last two weeks by grade. And you can see that's a little all over the place. You know, we didn't have any in third grade, or seventh grade, or 10th grade. But you know, we had, the highest was six students in 11th grade. This was a two-week period since the last time I reported. And then we've had, you know, three each in first and second grade. So really, again, a fairly wide distribution of age levels in terms of what we're seeing. Next slide is the positive cases by week. And you can see the second to last bar there is that increase, where we went, jumped up to 21. And then the last bar is what we've received so far through today. So a little bit more than halfway through the week. We're at about seven cases total, including hybrid and remote. And you know, if that stays on track, we should be more or less around 12, 14 cases for this week. But obviously, it's hard to know. Sometimes we'll get a day with a bunch of cases, sometimes we'll get days with zero. It's really a little bit hit or miss over the last couple of weeks that way. The public health data that the state reports for Shrewsbury, the last two-week period they reported on last Thursday was the 28th of February through the 13th of March. There were 88 cases in Shrewsbury, 6.29 cases per day, per 100,000 people. That's at 15.9 percent, 15.9, I'm sorry, per 100,000, and a 2.18 percent positivity rate, which places Shrewsbury in the yellow category for the state's rating system. This is again a reference to the fact that best practice is about having lots of different mitigation strategies that we can put in place to protect and reduce in-school transmission. The suspected in-school transmission, there remains seven suspected cases. The last was in late January. It represents 1.8 percent of all the positive cases that are in the hybrid model. Another way to flip that, of course, is 98.2 percent of the cases that have been in our schools identified are not considered to be due to actually being transmitted in school. And of the seven cases, only one of them is a suspected student-to-staff transmission. The others were either staff-to-student, staff-to-staff, or student-to-student. And again, almost all cases, you know, were not student-to-staff spread, only one for the entire school year. And with that, at this point, I will turn it over to Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing, who will talk with you a bit about the updated guidance that school districts have received from the CDC, and the study that that's based upon, and also some information about our pooled testing and vaccinations for staff. So I'll turn it over to Noel at this time.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. So in order to bring students back in full in the same amount of space that's been used for the hybrid model, we need to decrease the physical distancing at school from the standard of six feet that we've been using to a new standard of three feet. We know that this is a big change to the way we've been doing business since September, so we just want to spend a few minutes talking about a couple of the sources we've looked at when deciding to move forward with this change. So first is the recommendation that came from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is based on several sources, but most recently, this study that was done by Polly Vandenberg and colleagues, that has a very long name that is on this slide. It was published in the Clinical Infectious Diseases Journal at the beginning of this month. The study was actually done here in Massachusetts and looked at districts across the state who were in-person in various models, with students spaced at various distances from three to six feet. Universal masking was a common mitigation strategy in all of the districts. The study looked at the data that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had collected from districts, and combined that with detailed district infection control plans, and found that greater physical distancing between individuals in school buildings was not associated with significantly reduced rates of COVID infections among students and staff. So on the slide, I just quoted the conclusion portion of the study, which you can see supports three-foot distancing in schools. This study is really just one example of a growing body of evidence that three-foot distancing, in combination with other mitigation strategies at school, like masking, hand washing, and staying home if sick, is sufficient to protect us from virus transmission. So just last week, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention released a statement regarding their review of the latest science as it relates to K-12 schools. And their updated guidance now advises that in combination with masking, students should maintain a distance of at least three feet in classroom settings. So the Department of Education and Secondary, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has included three-foot distancing as an option for schools since the beginning of their guidance for the beginning of the school year. In the fall, based on the available data and guidance that we received from experts, Shrewsbury opted to go with the more conservative six-foot option for physical distancing, with the commitment to follow the data and continue to make decisions based on science. In addition to the studies and data that have become available since that time, our own experience in informal data collection began when we first welcomed students back into our buildings last July for extended school year special education services. During that program and since that time, we know that many of our staff, due to the nature of their work, have worked within three feet of students without issues. The combination of that experience and the data that is now available to us makes us feel comfortable with making the change to three-foot distancing at this time. So I do just want to point out that while the recommendation for distancing has changed, the definition of close contact has not changed. So that close contact definition is still being within six feet of a positive individual for 15 minutes or more. So when we have a positive case in school, and they're in school during their two-day contact tracing period, and we're using the three-foot distancing, we will very likely identify more close contacts who will need to quarantine. Our hope is that the number of cases in the community declines, and that the need to contact trace and quarantine will not be widespread. But I do just want to make people aware that this is a possibility that comes along with the change in physical distance protocols. This slide is just a reminder for everyone that we do still have several mitigation strategies in place at school. So physical distancing is still in place. The standard for the distance has just changed from six feet to three feet. And that three feet is specifically permitted only when masks are on. So times like lunch and snack, or mass breaks when masks are off, will need to happen in areas of the building where six-feet distance can be maintained. Masks are still required for all students and staff. We do have a very few students whose disability prevents them from tolerating mask-wearing, and their adults who work with them continue to work on building tolerance for mask-wearing. Of course, frequent hand washing or sanitizing is still a must, and staying home if you're feeling ill, and getting tested for COVID is also going to remain a key strategy for us. We've added a couple of new things to our list of mitigation measures since the fall, and I'll just talk a little bit more about each of these next. So I know that all of you have heard about the weekly pool testing option that was added at the beginning of February for all staff, and has now been phased in across the grade levels for students since mid, starting in mid-February. Elementary and preschool students will be added next week. So as of next week, all students will have the option to pool test. Testing is highly encouraged for everyone, and is optional for most people, due to the nature of contact involved in sports. As of this week, all students, student athletes are required to test weekly in an effort to make participation in athletics that much safer for everyone involved. Pool testing is an important mitigation strategy for us, as it allows us to identify cases in people who have no symptoms, or just don't have any symptoms yet. We isolate those individuals, do the required contact tracing at school, and quarantine any close contacts in order to prevent further spread. We have been asked, if this is so important, why didn't you start doing it earlier in the year when case counts were higher? The answer is that we would have loved to have done that, but access to testing was limited at that time, and the funding, which is now available to us through COVID-specific grants, was not available until recently. We would really love to see an increase in participation in pool testing, especially as we move forward with bringing students back in full. Again, it's just one more way for us to make our school environment as safe as it can be, and the more people who participate, the more effective the program is. So I'll just do a quick review of the process for people who might be watching and are not aware of the program yet, or who might be on the fence about participating. So it's important to know that we are working with a company that allows us to collect individual samples. We ship those individual samples to the lab, where they are pooled for testing, and they reserve the individual samples, so they're available for retesting if a positive pool is found. This means that only the individual who is actually positive is affected by the need to isolate. Other members of a positive pool do not need to be retested or quarantined while waiting for another set of results, because their sample has already been retested at the lab, and we know who is positive or negative when we receive results. This is a concern that has been brought to us by several families, and I just want to dispel the myth that pool testing would cause your child to needlessly quarantine and miss school while waiting for a retest. Because of the company we work with, that is not a concern for us. Next, I want to assure people that the test is a quick and painless shallow nasal swab that takes less than a minute. You do it at home. So for smaller children, parents can help with the test. Older children could easily do the test themselves. So the test is done at home, and then the sample is dropped off when the child comes to school. The sign-up process is also simple, and just requires a one-time electronic signature of a consent form in the Power School Parent Portal. So we're asking that people, please consider signing your child up to participate in the program. Many of the people who are currently participating really value the peace of mind that comes with knowing their COVID status each week. And this is a quick and free way for staff and families to get that information. Finally, I just want to mention our last mitigation strategy that we are thrilled became available in just the last few weeks for all school staff, and that is COVID vaccination. As you can see, staff were surveyed today, and I really have to give a shout-out to my 700-plus colleagues who all responded in less than 24 hours, so we could give you this data tonight. We're very happy to be able to report that 77 percent of our staff have received at least one dose of vaccine to date. 13 percent of those people are fully vaccinated, meaning that they are at least 14 days out from their second dose of either Moderna or Pfizer, or their first and only dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. An additional 17 percent of staff are scheduled to receive their first dose in the coming days. Just 5 percent of our staff have reported that they do not plan to get the vaccine. And 1 percent in today's survey said that they're having trouble finding an appointment. So I just want to encourage those people to check their emails about some recent opportunities that have been made available, and certainly to reach out to me if they continue to have any trouble that I could possibly assist with. I do have to say that our staff have been very resourceful in finding appointments, appointments across the state. But our numbers would not be quite as good as they are if it were not for a couple of community partners, who I would like to thank. Osco Pharmacy, right here in Shrewsbury, has partnered with us for several years for flu vaccine clinics. And the pharmacists there worked extremely hard to secure 100 doses of vaccine exclusively for our staff. And I'm happy to say we'll be holding a clinic to administer those doses on Friday. I'd also like to thank the Central Massachusetts Regional Public Health Alliance, who of course have partnered with us on many things throughout this very unusual year. And in the past, we're always grateful for their collaboration. Tonight, I'd like to thank them for their work with the City of Worcester and the St. Vincent's Hospital Worcester State University Regional Vaccination Site to organize four staff, school-staff-only days at the Worcester State site. And they also provided private sign-up links for all of our staff, making it really easy for people to make appointments for those clinics locally. So that's all I have for you tonight. Thanks for your time. I'm happy to leave you on this positive note, and I'll hand things back to Dr. Sawyer to continue.
Thank you very much, Ms. Freeman, and I appreciate the work that Noel continues to do, and all the team of our nurses, who have been invaluable, of course, during managing through the pandemic over the last year plus. At this point, I want to turn to talking about returning to school in full. And this is a slide I shared last week that just references from the State Department of Education's guidance that this is a substantial programming shift. And I don't want to, anyone listening or watching, to underestimate just how big of a heavy lift this is, in terms of making a lot of change in a short amount of time, for really good reasons. But logistically, there are a lot of challenges, and I'll ask Mr. Collins to speak to that in a bit as well. Some of those logistical challenges I mentioned last week was based on public health guidance, three-foot distancing in classrooms, as Ms. Freeman spoke about, six-foot distancing for lunch, mass breaks, et cetera. We've now purchased approximately 1,600 desks and 300 tables to enable a full return, because some of the typical classroom furniture would not allow us to do three-foot distancing. We actually have to pull some more furniture out of certain classrooms, install desks. And of course, there's lots of desks that are in cafeterias and gymnasiums in order to allow for that six-foot distancing at lunchtime. So there's some logistics there. And before Mr. Collins speaks to it, again, and actually, if you can go back on the slide, Mr. Leroux. In addition to the logistical challenges, the reality is that we have a lot of challenges relative to how we manage student assignments, student schedules. And that was a big wild card when we asked our families, you know, how many people wanted to come back from full remote learning. We had an excellent response from our families. And we have different circumstances in different schools, in terms of the number of seats available, based on the space we have. So when I speak a little bit about our plan to bring students back, this reality that we are going to need a phased-in approach, if you go back to the next slide, it really, just for the logistics to work, not only for furniture and spacing, but as far as student assignments, and our leadership team has worked really, really hard to make plans that really minimize the amount of change that might be required for students who have been in the hybrid model all along, and trying to be thoughtful about the way we can transition students who are returning back from all remote, and also the students who are remaining all remote, and what changes might, trying to minimize changes for those students as well. And I think that we've done that to the greatest extent we possibly can. But before I continue with talking about the schedule for return for our K-12 grades, I'd like Mr. Collins just to talk a bit about some of the logistics that we've been working through, and to give a sense to the community of what's been happening.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So I guess first, for context, two things I would say. And this is based upon some remarks Dr. Sawyer made just the other day, talking to the leadership team. And that is, there's lots of information floating out in the media, and amongst families and friends across the state, and different things happening in different districts. And one of the sayings that Dr. Sawyer offered up, which I think is very relevant, is this idea that comparisons are odious. And I know this is a statement from his mother.
This one from my mother or my grandmother.
And so in that context, you know, every district is in a different situation based upon their own local circumstances. Shrewsbury, for example, you know, given our scale and size, we're the 28th-largest school district in the state of Massachusetts. So we are a large school district in the Commonwealth, indifferent than most other school districts. We're in the top 9 percent in terms of size. So we've got some scale issues to deal with. The other thing that I would say that feeds into this is that because of that scale, it is really necessary and important that we phase ourselves back in and take this in various chunks. There's a lot of people working to make the reopening work smoothly for children and for parents, and to do so in a way that has really strict adherence to the Department of Ed guidance and regulations that Mrs. Freeman was just talking about. So when kids do So when kids do return, all the preparations that are happening right now are going to place us in a really good position to make sure we're in strict adherence with all those guidelines to minimize the risk for staff and students. And the staff, you know, this is a collaborative effort from, you know, custodians to the newly hired COVID assistants, school secretaries, school building principals. Vendor relationships have been so important during this process, because some of our long-term vendors have really come through for us in a time of need in terms of providing us with the furniture equipment or the tents. We had a tent go up at Patton School today, for example. It is heated, by the way. We have a heating element in there. So if we do have some cold April mornings, we'll pull that out as the weather gets a little bit warmer. But, and you know, we know that staff and students will adapt to these circumstances. We are going to have to have cafeteria seating in a tent-based situation at Patton and at Oak Middle School. Those are the two schools that will have to have cafeteria seating outdoors. So we're working on all those preparations now. It's happening in a matter of phases. And, you know, I feel very confident that this first phase with elementary schools is going to happen smoothly tomorrow. We have major delivery to Beal and Floral School for some new desks for installation. On Friday, we'll have Coolidge, Patton, and Spring, and then Saturday morning will be finish up where we need to finish up. And so, you know, things are happening, but we absolutely do, absolutely do need, you know, the April break time and probably some additional time with students not being in the building to help us with the reopening at Sherwood, Oak, and the high school. It's not only stuff coming into the school, but also within the school. We're reusing spaces differently when we reopen with full enrollment. So for example, we have some classrooms under the hybrid model that are currently just being used for teachers who show up every day and are teaching a group of students remotely. And so now we're recapturing those spaces. We have to refurnish those spaces. And sometimes, you know, teachers, Mr. Jones moves, needs to move from, you know, the A wing, his classroom, over to the B wing. So there's a lot of internal moving parts as well, and that's what's going to take us the time. And we can't have students and staff in the building when all those moving parts are happening. So that's why we really need to have a phased approach. This is a large undertaking. And, you know, the other interesting thing that I think makes us unique, or maybe, not unique, but different than maybe some other school districts, is especially, it's actually throughout the district, is given our educational philosophy of kind of collaborative student learning, we have a lot of situations where we've had tables in our classrooms to facilitate student interaction. And that really doesn't work for providing three-foot distancing. And so we've had to convert to removing a lot of tables and installing individual desk situations in kind of the traditional rows and columns to afford for maximum space utilization, but also maintaining that three-foot distancing. So that's another kind of feature of Shrewsbury Public Schools, if you will. And while it's been great to have that kind of collaboration in the past, we had furniture that accommodated that, facilitated that, and so now we need to adapt. So that's just another piece that's kind of being borne out here, and is going to require some time for us to prepare in the way that we want to prepare for the reopening at both, you know, elementary, middle schools, and the high school. And then finally, I'll say that, you know, we are certainly working with our transportation vendor very closely with all of these schedules. We've notified the police department with respect to the expectation of greater parent traffic for parent drop-off and pickup. And again, we, you know, you know that we've adapted the food service program to this kind of grab-and-go model to facilitate the throughput in these circumstances. So, you know, appreciate everybody's effort in terms of the support services. And again, I think right now, we're looking in really good shape for the elementary reopening, but we're going to need some additional time in the coming weeks here to prepare ourselves for the other grade levels.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I think that gives you a sense of really some of the complexity that we're working through. But so without further ado, and I don't think we have a drumroll queued up, but this is the recommended plan in terms of dates and timeline for return to full-in-person school. As you know, from our meeting two weeks ago, we've been focused on our K-4 reopening on Monday, April 5. We did the state's mandate, as we discussed at the last meeting, was for grades K through 5 to return by April 5. The state suggested that districts that were 5th grade was not part of their K-4 model, that they would likely want to seek a waiver to couple them with the middle school grades instead of with elementary grades, which is something that we chose to do, because it logistically is really, would have been very difficult for us, first of all, to do what we needed to do for the 5th grade, because that's actually a very highly enrolled grade where we have some space concerns. I'll mention that in a moment. But trying to open them on one timetable and grade 6 on another, just given the fact that they're housed in the same building, would have been logistically very problematic. So we're pleased that the state granted us that waiver as expected. And our plan is to bring grades 5 and 6 back the week of April 12 with a phase-in approach that I'll discuss in more detail in a moment. We are going to need until after the April break for grades 7 and 8. You heard some of the reasons why, you know, tent, and we need to actually have some furniture that's on order delivered. It's going to be delivered over the April vacation to set up Oak as we need to, to make that safe at three-foot distancing. And they will phase in starting Monday, the Monday after the April vacation on the 26th. And I'll give some details about that in a moment. And then we're also then looking to the following Monday reopen the high school for full-in-person learning on Monday, May 3. The Department of Elementary and Secondary has not mandated a start for high schools yet. They've indicated it will be at some point this spring, and they would tell us in April. But we felt, based on the planning we've been able to do, which is, you know, complicated by the fact that our high school is designed for 1,475 students, and even with, even with 200 or so students in all remote learning, we'll still have 1,700-plus students on that site. So it's just, it's not as easy just space-wise as it might be for some schools that have, aren't as overcrowded as ours are. But this is the timeline that I'll be asking the school committee to approve this evening. So for more details, focusing first on grades K to 4, for a Monday, April 5, return. We do, as we said, we're going to have to empty the schools of all students and staff for a couple of days to do all this work with furniture moving and installation for elementary, as we discussed two weeks ago. That's actually going to be taking place tomorrow and Friday. We appreciate all the flexibility our families are helping us with to have students learn from home remotely, as will our staff as well. And that's something that is going to enable us to get this work done. In terms of the calendar going forward between now and the April vacation, we will continue, as part of our planning, to hold early release days on April 7 and April 14. That's important, both for sort of the fact that the middle schools and the high schools, depending on which date, are still going to be in hybrid mode, and also to enable some of the time we need for our teachers to responsibly make sure we're putting this back, you know, knitting back the sequence of the curriculum together. We've had two groups of kids. Now we're bringing them back to one group and so forth. But in order to meet state student learning time requirements, once we're past the April vacation, we will not be having any more of the early release Wednesdays, because we need the time devoted to what's known as student learning time under the state regulations. In order to make that work, particularly for the high school and the middle school grades, we need to be in school the full session for the entire week. The state's been, of course, auditing districts about that all along, and they'll continue to do that. At the elementary level, we would have had a little more wiggle room, but it really is kind of a moot point, because the buses need to run on that schedule. So we really just need to move away after the April vacation from the Wednesday afternoons. Now, some of the work on the Wednesday afternoons, of course, was to do some collaborative planning to keep everybody on the same page with the fact that we needed to do, you know, in essence, almost double the planning for planning for what kids would be doing at home on their hybrid or remote days, and what they were doing on the days they were in school. That need will not be there as much, of course, when kids are back in school full-time, and the other students who stay fully remote will be, you know, there's no more hybrid model from that point forward. For grades 5 and 6, as I mentioned, we're the week of Monday, May 12. I really appreciate and want to commend the leadership team at Sherwood, in particular, John Kelly, the principal, along with assistant principals Karen Gudicamst and Heather Goblaski, and everyone who they worked with on their team, to figure out how they could take essentially the proverbial 10 pounds of sand and put it in a five-pound bag. Because we have, particularly in 5th grade, we have bringing back the number of students who are able to return or shows to return from all remote. They're able to assign those across various teams across the school. But a number of our 5th-grade teams would have more than the maximum that we could fit in two classrooms. They're two-person teams in two classrooms with three-foot distancing. And so what they've done is created a plan to reallocate some spaces, whether that's a classroom that may have been used for remote learning, as Mr. Collins spoke about, or it might be a smaller special education room that's contiguous to those classrooms, and essentially use three spaces for those teams, and be able to, in addition to the two teachers, utilize paraprofessional help or special education help or specialist teachers in order to make sure that students are able to be with three-foot distancing and in the same area, but in more than just the two classrooms. And that will enable us to do what we really wanted to avoid, which was start switching kids' teacher's assignments at this late part of the school year. Now, that's really, I mean, no teacher wants to lose a student they've been working with since September. Certainly, families don't want to have their child switched to a brand-new teacher in April. And so this plan enables that to happen, and I really appreciate that they figured out some innovative ways to make it happen. And I appreciate the Sherwood staff, you know, working to make this something that will work for kids. In order to pull this off, we're going to need to do two remote days for Sherwood students for all the furniture moving again. We're doing that on Monday, April 5, and Tuesday, April 6. And those dates were chosen essentially because that's when the vendors could make it work for us in terms of delivery and setup and all those kinds of things. The other piece is that, just given the volume and the change of what's going to be happening, Mr. Kelly and his team highly recommended that we phase this in over the course of those first few days of that week, that on Monday, April 12, that we have all grade 6 students. And even, you know, this includes students who haven't been in the building this year, but they were likely, unless they were new to the community, they were likely in the building last year, to attend on Monday, so they can work through all the issues and, you know, how we're doing lunch differently. There's a lot of changes for all kids that are going to be taking place, and that's a very large school in terms of student population. And then on the next day, on Tuesday, we'd have our grade students come in, and then the opposite grade would be doing an all-remote day. That would be, they'd have live connections with their teachers, of course. But this would enable us to work out all the new elements without having the full complement of students there in one day. And then on the Wednesday, which is the last early release day, they would, all of the Sherwood students would attend for the morning hours. And then Thursday and Friday would be full in-person with the full complement of students for the rest of the week. So I think it's a very thoughtful plan that the Sherwood team put together, and that's what's being presented to you this evening. Because again, it's not only about getting kids back into school, which is highly desirable and something we want. We want to do it right. But I'm also very pleased that, based on all the logistics that Mr. Collins and Ms. Isaacson and all the administrative team put together, we are going to be able to have Sherwood make this entry the week of April 12. When I presented you two weeks ago, we didn't think it'd be possible probably until after the vacation. But we're going to be able to make that work, so it helps us with that phase-in process across the district based on our capacity. As far as Oak Middle School, again, we're going to need the time for some more furniture delivery, tent, the whole thing, and then be set up so we can begin full in-person after this April vacation. We're right now planning on the two remote days we'll need for furniture movement to be on Tuesday, April 13, and Thursday, April 15. In order to pull this off, you know, we don't have the option that Sherwood had to use extra spaces. And, you know, we have about 75 students coming back among our 7th and 8th graders. So the, after looking at a variety of options and looking again at what was going to create, you know, the least amount of change for students who have already been in the hybrid model, how can we fit kids in with the three-foot distancing requirements? Ultimately, the plan that was the most efficacious was to create a new team at each grade by decoupling the existing split 7th and 8th grade team that's onsite, which is known as 7TEAL, or 78TEAL, rather. And what would happen is that the remote students, because we really don't have room to put them and apportion them across all the different existing teams, we would take the 8th-grade students who belong to 78TEAL. They would be part of a new 8th-grade team, and the 8th-grade students who are in the all-remote program will join those students to create that new team. The other teams don't have to have to change or have any teacher changes, which is positive. The same thing would happen for grade 7. The 7th graders on 78TEAL will have a 7th-grade exclusive team, and they will be joined by the 7th-grade remote students who are coming back to in-person. And that is, I think, again, the way that they're minimizing the amount of disruption for the almost 1,000 students who are a part of the Oak Middle School operation. In addition to that, we're trying to minimize teacher change for those 7th and 8th graders on the split team. So two of the teachers on the 78TEAL will stick with the 8th graders, and two will go with the 7th graders, so one grade doesn't have all new teachers. Other teachers will be coming from some of the, who are serving the all-remote teams currently. So there'll be some change for some of the all-remote students who stay that way, essentially. And we know that it's very, it's quite, you know, it has been complicated in additional time and effort for the teachers who are teaching on the 78 split teams, just because of the additional curriculum planning for two different grades, as well as, you know, more meetings and different things because of the nature of those, that split. So we will also take the 7th and 8th Sapphire team, and any remaining students there will be reapportioned to the two existing all-remote teams. There'll be one remaining all-remote team in 8th grade and one existing all-remote team in 7th grade. And Dr. Jones and her team are working through how we can be, and of course, we're working with the Teachers Association around what's the most fair way to try to reposition teachers who have to make a change at this point in the year, which we understand is difficult. Unfortunately, there's no way to pull this off without some changes happening. The phase-in on the week after vacation is a little different than Sherwood because of the nature of creating these new teams. What the Oak Middle School leadership is recommending is that we actually stick with the cohorts for the first two days of that week, whereas students in Cohorts A, B, and all students who are returning from Cohort D would attend school in-person on Monday, April 26, and then would switch the next day. A would come in again, as they typically do. Our Cohort C students would come in on Tuesday, along again with those students who have returned from Cohort D. And they would have a little bit less of a dense piece coming right after the vacation in order to do some of the retraining of students around, you know, differences. There are going to be new lunch schedules, new lunch expectations, just for example. There'll be new students joining them, and this will help us have a more smooth takeoff, so to speak, into full in-person. And then by Wednesday, we will be all together, full in-person, the entire student population. And then finally, as far as the high school, that is grades 9 to 12, we would be looking for Monday, May 3, for students to return in full. And we don't have some kind of the same setup. Of course, a lot of our classes are cross-grades. So right now, the expectation is all students will be able to return by then. Of course, we have a little more time to plan before we get there. In terms of two all-remote days for furniture and pieces like that, again, we're, you know, our vendors have been working great with us, but I know the timeline, we may need to do a couple of remote days at the high school just to make sure all the furniture is where it needs to be before that May 3 start. But depending on what we're able to get accomplished over April vacation, some of those days may not require students to be remote. It might be half-days where kids come in person for the morning. But we do, just as all the other levels are going to, want to give our teachers a couple of afternoons to work on realigning curriculum and all the things that we have to do to make sure that the academic progress and process is done well as we bring everybody back in this, in this new configuration. So Monday, May 3, is the target for the high school level. And so to conclude, as I have the last several times I presented, again, we need to maintain our hope for better times ahead, but we have to look at what is happening right now with candor. The Shrewsbury School Journal will be arriving at homes, I think, over the next several days. And my column in that publication is, really talks about the fact that at this point, there's a real mix of emotions that are happening right now in our school district. There's exhaustion, because people have been working really hard for a really long time and really managing a lot of change that's been happening within a year that already has a lot of challenges with it. And this is one more huge change that people are working through. And people are worried. They're worried about our kids. They're worried about their well-being. They're worried about their academic progress. And, you know, there still remains worries about the pandemic, and different people are in different places with that, but that, you know, different people have different levels of concern for various reasons. At the same time, however, I think that there are At the same time, however, I think that there are people, people are proud, rightfully proud of the work that's happened over the past year, that has been of incredibly high quality. I think there's been incredible innovation our educators have shown and our support staff, and people have just continued to go above and beyond again and again to serve our students well. And that is not only educators, but also families, because this has been a challenge for families all along, for sure. And then, finally, I think people are feeling hopeful. I think as people are getting vaccinated, as people are seeing the opportunity to get kids back in more of a routine, to have more face-contact time with kids, to be able to improve their education, to be able to be more cognizant of how kids are doing day-to-day, and monitoring how they're doing in terms of their own mental health and well-being, all these things are good things, and I think people are seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. We can't predict how the pandemic's going to continue to evolve, we're obviously crossing our fingers, we're not going to see another wave as they've seen in Europe recently, and a lot of this is going to depend on how things play out. And again, I just urge people to continue to try to follow guidelines so that we can minimize the impact on what's happening, because, as you can see on the slide, you know, we're following guidance, but because of the, they have not changed the close-contact rules, if we get cases in school and kids have been present, or staff have been present when they were in their infectious period, more people are going to be quarantined. That's just the nature of what's going to be happening with bringing more kids into the buildings. And I'll just end by saying, again, you know, we're really, you know, pick your analogy, March Madness, a marathon, you know, whatever it is, we're heading into the final stretch here, and it's going to be some real positives because of getting kids back to school more frequently and in-person. At the same time, it's, you know, this is the time when, you know, people need to support one another, people need to give grace to one another, so we can finish this race as strongly as we can. I will, again, as Mr. Collins mentioned, when I mentioned our leadership team yesterday, you know, comparisons are odious, as I've found, I looked it up, it goes back to the 1400s in some, in Old English, and it's something where, you know, everybody is doing the best they can under their own circumstances that they're facing, and I think continuing to focus on how can we support each other to get through this, and I'm really very proud of this community, I'm very proud of the school district, I'm proud of everyone who's doing the work to make it happen for kids, and I think that there are brighter times ahead. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the committee has about this plan, and ask that you vote to approve this timeline.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Questions or comments? Lindsay.
Thank you. I have a little bit, and so my colleague can bear with me. I think, just to start on some of the, sort of the more medical side of this, I want to just really thank the district for the efforts you've gone through around pool testing. My children have been involved for the last few weeks, and it seems to get easier and easier each week, and so, you know, first we had to find a QR code and keep the QR code, and now they tell me, "You don't need the QR code anymore, Mom, it's okay, I've lost it in the backpack, and that doesn't matter, the staff have figured that out." And so, anything we can do to get more people, more families involved in that, I certainly encourage families to, you know, do the, do what they need to from where they are, but the more of the community that can engage in that, the safer our schools are for our kids and for our staff. Beyond relief to think that 94% of our teachers are either scheduled or have received their first dose of the vaccine, that is just huge for us. It gives me a great sense of relief that we're making, that, you know, we're doing, obviously, what the state is requiring of us to do, but that we're also doing it in a way that's going to keep our staff safe, and that's really, really important. There is huge enthusiasm in my house returning to school at the very young end and at the very old end, the old end being me, and at the young end being my littlest, and in the middle, there's some like, "Ah, what's that, what's that about?" But I think, you know, I think parents are, who I talk to are enthusiastic about the return to school and getting back to normal, and it feels like we're finally starting to get back to some semblance of normal, and I certainly know, as a parent, there's nothing that can replace in-person instruction for our kids, so I'm certainly excited about it. I do just want to spend a few minutes talking about this incredibly huge operational lift to get us to three feet, and I want to thank Mr. Collins and the many other people that are working behind the scenes. I know Ms. Isaacson has been hugely important here. I certainly see no reason to compare us to any other district. I think we're doing incredible work. I think, yes, we are large, we have major space constraints, we're building a new building to deal with that issue. We have a high school that needs attention soon when we talk about how full it is, so I know that there is much to do just to deal with sort of what's in front of us, and every time we make a decision, there's three more that come from it, and so I want to thank the team for all of that. I do have, I do think there is, having kids across three different buildings, there's a lot here for parents to digest in terms of schedule, so if I can, Dr. Sawyer, just a couple of clarifying points, and I'm sure if I spend even more time with your slide deck, I would get them, but the things that pop out to me as a parent who's trying to figure out who goes where and when. It sounds like that half-days for the district after April 14th, we won't see any more of those for the K to eight grade level, but there might be an additional one at the high school, we're not sure yet as we think about spacing, or is it?
I think the, I'm sorry, just to be clear, and I'll go back to that slide, we would expect that because the high school would still be in the hybrid model, that they would have the early-release day just at the high school on April 28th. All the rest of K through eight, the last early-release day would be the Wednesday prior to the break, which would be the 14th.
The week after vacation, great, okay, that's helpful. When do we expect that Cohort D students who are coming back, the many, many, many of them, when might they learn their teacher assignments? What should parents expect about that?
Sure, the elementary family should have received a communication earlier this week from their school. As far as, I don't have the specific date in front of me as far as Sherwood in term, because they'll be spread out across the different teams, and I know they're working on that. So they, I would expect that, same timetable sometime next week, that our fifth and sixth graders who are returning will find out what their assignment is. And then, as far as seventh and eighth grade, we know that they'll be on one of these two teams. Exactly which teachers are going to be on those teams, we're finalizing that and should be able to try to get that information out also in the next week or so. Might be another, it depends on how fast we can do that, but certainly a couple of weeks before they return. I also should mention that the elementary team, and then subsequently the middle school teams, are very much considering what kinds of orientation opportunities they can provide to students who are in Cohort D in terms of potentially visiting the school ahead of time, if they haven't been in the school yet, getting a sense of who their teacher is, connecting with their new teacher. So there's a variety of, actually, some of the planning work that the elementary teams are doing over the next two afternoons, that's one of the reasons that we have the students, not only the all-remote, but in the afternoons are going to be doing asynchronous work so that a lot of these tasks can be carried out, because we're on a tight timetable to make these kinds of things happen. So we are going to be making lots of efforts to make sure any of our students who have been in all-remote throughout the year and are coming back in-person will have some opportunities to make connections so that it's as smooth a transition as possible.
Wonderful. If I can, just to first, some clarification, both at Sherwood, and then I'll have a couple of questions about Oak. The, if you want to bring it up, I think it's Slide 30, but the sixth-grade team would come back, including any children who had been remote on April 12th. Would parents expect that then the fifth-grade team on that day would be an all-remote day?
Correct.
Okay, and the opposite would be true the next day?
Yes.
Six will do a remote, I just wanted to, it wasn't, they weren't kind of assigned on the slide.
Yeah, it's not explicit on that slide, but we'll make sure that that's communicated clearly in the next place.
Again, just merely because I have one in my house?
Yes.
And you're at my disposal, so I'll just clarify my schedule and everyone waits, but there are obviously hundreds of other students that this relates to. And similarly, if we, if you don't mind jumping ahead to Slide 34, for the Oak transition, which is different, so Sherwood, we're doing by grade, Oak, we're doing by cohort, which I appreciate the rationality, but just for families to plan. What, I guess I'm a little confused about the B and D return, I gave you the wrong slide number, there it is, thank you. If, how would the D students know whether they're going back, since both seventh and eighth go back, it's not as clear to me, they'll get notification whether they should go back on the 26th or the 27th?
No, they'll come back on both, they'll be there attending both days and meeting their other students. So the Cohort D students, they want to be in school both of those days.
Okay.
But we, and Cohort A students will be in school both of those days, as they always have been. It's just B and C who will, B will attend on Monday, and C will attend on Tuesday.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that's clear as well.
Excellent, and then similarly, let's say, C on April 26th would be remote still?
Right.
And then vice versa, okay, but D parents should be expecting that they'll, their kids can be in school from April 26th, sort of forward?
Yes.
Okay. That is hugely helpful. I think I'm done for the moment. Thank you, everybody. There's a lot, there's a lot to communicate, and I think it's fair, the parents will have some questions, and, you know, I think it's also just important for the community to know that there are individuals on the school committee who are going to work through this and be wondering, "Wait, wait, wait," and I'm sure we'll make some mistakes, and we'll try to muster all of our grace. We'll channel your mother.
And then, you know, the elementary team will be, has sent out detailed information, and certainly now, once the school committee approves this timeline for the middle schools and the high school, you know, those various principals and assistant principals will make sure to send out very detailed information in the coming days to their families.
As much as it is for parents, you know, potentially if you have kids across different grade spans, a lot to juggle, I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes into this, to try to think about what is the right way to, you know, put close to 1,000 kids back in a building and do it in a safe way, and, you know, and so that, it's very important, and I, you can tell there's a lot of thought back here. So I know we'll do our best to communicate with families, and so thank you all for the efforts.
Jason?
Just a few comments, and I want to thank Ms. Heffernan for her detailed questions, because I do think it is helpful for those watching to get a more detailed sense, and I would just emphasize, of course, the need for clear communication around what is clearly confusing and difficult topic. I know that, obviously, for the benefit of those watching, this is, as Dr. Sawyer has noted several times, this does not take effect until this body casts a vote this evening. But also, it was something that had to be developed relatively quickly, and most importantly, I want to commend all of our staff at every level for all of their hard work in making this happen relatively quickly. This is an extraordinary logistical lift. It is a massive feat that has to be carried out in different ways, at different grade levels, and the communication, both not just with the parent community and the public, but also with staff and students at all levels, is astounding. As I commented during the last meeting, regardless of one's feeling around whether or not students should be returning in person, and to be clear, I am somebody who feels very strongly that there is substantial value to the in-person classroom experience, regardless of folks' feelings about that. This is a topic on which the Commonwealth's communication to districts were both poor and highly politicized, and this district, as were districts across the Commonwealth, made to do a lot in an extraordinarily short amount of time. There was a lot of planning underway for next year, but planning for next year and planning for three weeks are entirely separate matters. So I want to commend this team for their quick work. I think that this is a plan that, to me, makes sense for our district, makes sense for getting our students, those whose families are comfortable with them being back in the classroom, getting them back in the classroom. And I do, you know, first of all, thank and ask the committee for their continued grace and patience, and I just want to emphasize to the district, as Ms. Heffernan alluded to, the need for extensive communication around this, because obviously, there's a lot of detail here, there's a high propensity for confusion, so the more communication, once this body does its work and casts its vote, the better. So thank you.
I have much to say. I would say that the logistics here are dazzling. The fact that every district in the Commonwealth has been, was sent into shock by the requirements of the DESE, and that we're actually beating their schedule in one of the larger districts in the state, I think it's a real tribute to our administration. I support the proposal, and can you read it later?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for the presentation, but more importantly, the meticulous attention to detail in a short amount of time to get this going. You know, I think residents need to be conscious of the Herculean effort that's involved in making these dates happen. I also know, a couple of weeks ago, you know, we had voted on a waiver for fifth grade, and, you know, that's based on the makeup of our grades and how they align to our school buildings, and I saw on the news yesterday, we were one of 26 districts that had to request that because of that very reason. So I applaud everybody for the planning involved here, to bring back everyone safe, also, you know, bringing grades five and six back a couple of weeks earlier than the state recommended, and then certainly looking ahead to high school, as the parent of a freshman, very thankful for the planning around that May 3rd date. Also encouraged by the staff survey that Ms. Freeman shared, it's always great to see that response rate, I mean, 700-plus respondents, and the fact that we have 77% that have had at least one dose, and another 13% that have scheduled, 90% essentially are going to have at least one dose, you know, by the time we hit, you know, reopening. So I think it's very encouraging. Curious on pool testing, and on Ms. Freeman, if you have some insight into the participation rates that we've seen, in particular at the high school. I know a couple of weeks ago, we talked about, you know, the numbers, and have we seen any, you know, increase in, you know, participation amongst the high schoolers?
Well, by requiring, by virtue of, you know, us requiring athletes to be tested, there will be a higher number of students at the high school tested this week. We have about, at last, well, pre-athletes being required, there are about 700 students at the high school signed up for testing, but on average, about 400 students participating per week. So that's something that we are working on as well, is a way to notify parents so that parents, as it stands right now, you don't really get any kind of confirmation that your test was dropped off, or what your test result is, so we'd like there to be a way for parents to get confirmation that their child's test was logged in, so that when we announce there were no positive test results, they know their child was among, you know, the tests that were done. And I'd say, percentage-wise, that's, those numbers have kind of stayed true at Oak and Sherwood. There's about 100 tests, or 200 tests per week the last couple of weeks, and elementary will start next week. So, again, there's lots of room for expanding the program, and we would really like to do that, just to make the program more effective, so.
Absolutely, no, I'd like to thank everybody involved with getting that going. I know my daughter participates religiously every Friday, you know?
Right, yeah.
It's a very easy process, when she walks into school on Friday, they drop it off, and she's always, you know, waiting for no response, you know, in terms of her test results, so thank you for that, appreciate that.
Thank you, that's great.
I do have a question along the lines of the pool testing. I think it's, if we can, you know, we are encouraging more, because we, that is one of the data points that we've talked about, adding that comfort level, having that data. What percentage of staff is participating in the pool testing?
So we have somewhere between 400 and 500, I think, staff participating each week of, you know, 800 staff, so not quite the 80% that we had targeted, but a higher percentage of staff than students at this point.
At this point, okay. Poor Mr. Collins just got up, and I'm going to ask him a question, sorry. I'm glad that, because I had asked a question about heated tents, so I'm glad that there is, because I think, you know, even in May, you can have cool weather, so I think that's great that there is a heating element for that. My question is on the food services. Is there going to be enough staff for that program when we're bringing everybody back? Because I know we've, we had some reduction there in the fall.
Yeah, that's a good question. We have had some difficulties with hiring some replacements. I think that the fact that we're going to continue with the prepackaged, prepared meals, grab-and-go model will allow us to service all the kids that we need to serve, but we have recently still put out postings for cafeteria help. We've certainly called upon those that were laid off because they're eligible under recall rights, and some of those folks did not want to return. So if folks are interested in applying, there is certainly, I believe there's a posting on our website that, where they could apply, and certainly, if there wasn't an immediate need, we would expect that we would have additional needs for this coming fall as well. So, you know, I'm confident that we'll serve the kids as we do the phased reopening, we'll be able to provide the services that we need because of the modified meal pattern that we have in place.
Okay.
But we are going to have to look really, and recruit heavily, I think, for the fall. If we go back to quote-unquote "normal,"
Normal, yeah.
And normal kind of meal service, we are going to have to add back those staff.
Okay, thank you.
And I too agree with Dr. McGee, I think, you know, we're beating this mandate, the DESE mandate, and with this logistical challenge, and it was a real operational lift in a very short amount of time, and I, we, I think what the, you know, people who are watching or what the public might see is our meetings, and there's so much more going on behind the scenes that isn't, you know, maybe noticed, but there's so much work happening, and I know for some parents, maybe it didn't happen as fast as they wanted, but we have to make sure that, you know, everything is in place for sure that, you know, everything is in place for students, staff to return safely, to have, you know, the three-foot distancing, the, I mean, 1,600 desks, tables, everything in in place for everybody to return. So thank you to staff. And, you know, in thinking of staff, you know, reading in the paper, you're seeing some districts are having difficulties. And I think we have a very cooperative staff, you know, everybody's working to get back to what we feel is the best in-person learning is the best for students. So thank you to everybody in a very short, quick period of time to to get this back. So, very good.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the comments and the support of the school committee. Just before you vote, just to respond to a couple of pieces, I think it's important that everyone understand that planning for reopening happened and started happening long before the state's mandate. And some of the legit, the reason we are able to beat the mandated time for by Sherwood and also for the high school is because those plans were already in motion to some degree. Some of those plans were necessarily not fully baked because people have to also understand that the the round of stimulus that was just approved just a couple of weeks ago, we're relying on some of those dollars to be able to do this work. And there is along the lines of, you know, all this purchase of furniture, you know, we looked at like if we had to come back and we were going to do these things, how will we pull that off unless we bought a lot of furniture? Or are there other ways to do it? These were conversations we were having long before DESI came up and said April 5th for K to four. To be perfectly frank, I think April 5th was was sooner than what we were, in our minds, thinking would be elementary, we were kind of looking at that April vacation as a time to do a lot of staging of things and whatnot. But obviously, the team pivoted and we're it's good that we're bringing back elementary kids and sooner. But it has, you know, it hasn't been without the expense of, you know, again, lots and lots of just incredibly long days for our leadership team members and, you know, not being able to spend as much time on something else that we've done. And again, I only speak to what our district has done. I think that we've done a very, very high-quality job of what we have provided during the hybrid model being in place. And, you know, just saying you're hybrid or you're full or you're remote, that's a that's an approach. That doesn't mean you're doing it well. And I think we've done it well and it takes time and energy to do it well. And the stability we've had and been able to have over time has been incredibly valuable to our kids, making the kind of progress that we want them to make educationally. And we'll talk about that with Ms. Clouder in just a moment. But, you know, it shouldn't be missed that, you know, how we've handled things to date, I think, has been, at times, we've been maybe a little more conservative than other places. Sometimes we may be a little more aggressive about certain things. But I think we're trying to navigate it based on what our circumstances are in our district. I'm proud of the work that we've done. I'm proud of the work our staff has done. And again, I think now with this all in place and falling into place, it is, it's been a huge lift. But again, we're very pleased with the way that it's playing out. So again, appreciate the support and look forward to moving forward after the school committee hopefully approves this this evening.
Thank you. So no further comments? May I have a motion that the school committee here, no, that's not it. May I have a motion that the school committee vote to approve the superintendent's recommended timeline for grade spans to return to full in-person learning?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, Ms. Clouder will provide an update on student assessment.
Thank you. I first described the STAR platform, the adaptive software that we're using to assess students K to eight in December. And so having administered the initial screening report, I'm here tonight to talk about the first round of results. Before diving in, I want to briefly revisit the purpose of the initiative. The goal of developing a data culture, of course, is to benefit students. But this work also eases the burden of individual educators because it enables us to address needs from a system's perspective. A system's perspective, both instructionally, in terms of thinking about how we fine-tune curriculum to better meet student needs, but also in terms of allocating supports and resources to the students that need it most. So in terms of thinking about how we allocate those resources, we've long been fostered a sense of collaborative culture within grade spans. Looking at data in this way enables us to foster collaboration across grade spans and to think particularly about how students transition across grade spans within within levels. So although we had great data about students in grade four, for example, the utility of that data as students went to grade five was sometimes lost. And so the purpose of the system is to kind of knit different thinking together around how we track student progress. That said, this is kind of a beginning initiative and it was a heck of a time to start a new initiative. So it's a little bit delayed in its initial implementation and obviously some of the meeting structures that are in place to support this work are under stress this year. But I wanted to remind everybody about the general goal before diving into the specific results. If we're successful, this will help us kind of address the need to move closer to a multi-tiered system of supports where we really strengthen that tier-one instruction, the content that all students get. Again, the notion is to be proactive about designing curriculum universally so that all kids can access content and make successful progress towards meeting grade-level standards. But also, it enables us to follow up on some of our district goals that we set way back when in terms of making sure that, sorry, that we really address the needs of all learners. And although this seems like a very small technical piece, it's attached to larger, bigger initiatives within the district. And we've been working on data-driven decision-making for some time. So again, although at each level, there were some efforts to monitor student progress and think about the notion of intervention, and even in some levels to kind of reflect on the effectiveness of intervention, the goal in thinking about this is to make sure that we're looking at that from a district perspective and not just from a building-by-building perspective. So although attending to data is really important, this is one, you know, this is the STAR data is just one picture, one snapshot of student performance. And as I said, this is our initial implementation year, looking at STAR data. So there's a wealth of information to look at. It's not the only source of assessment data. As you know, our teachers are very skillful at monitoring student progress in many ways. And we're fortunate that at some levels, we have kind of homegrown common assessments and/or other tools so that as we're looking at the STAR data, we can look side by side at the information we're getting from some of those other tools and kind of test out the accuracy of this new system and see where things are tightly aligned, where we might want to adjust benchmarks going forward and so forth. So what do the initial screening results show us? We can look at the information in different ways. There are numerous reports available in the platform and you saw some of those in your report. I'm going to describe just a few of them. And again, I'm going to describe them from the perspective of the aggregate, all of the students in the system. If I was a teacher looking at this data, I'd be very focused on the nitty-gritty aspects of which skills kids were demonstrating, what was the next thing that they needed to know, which domains were stronger. But this perspective is really more general by design. So there are different reports and different types of scores. And the first score that you can see is a percentile rank score. Percentage rank scores range from 1 to 99 and they allow us to compare an individual child's scores to all the other students who took the test within that same administration window. So in students get a percentile rank based on that score and it places them on a progression of learning. So in this particular example, that child is scoring better than 58% of the peers that took that test at the same time, but not as well as the other 42%. A score of 50% would be average, you know, this is a bell curve. And the default benchmark in the software is set at 40%, meaning that students that are scoring between 28 and 25th and 39th percentile would be on watch or below that would be considered in need of intervention. And one of the first things we kind of looked at was, is that percentage a really good one for us? Because the norms that you can kind of compare data to are national. And as we know, Massachusetts compares really well to other states in the nation. So looking at that, you get a sense of how are kids performing, kind of akin to a doctor's visit. You get the vitals at that particular time. And that snapshot kind of gives us an initial feeling, but it doesn't allow us to really effectively track progress over time. So in your report, you can see a chart that talks about the results of looking at the percentile rank scores by grade level. Thanks. It looks like that. For the purpose of the presentation, I tried to take that same data and make it a little bit more user-friendly. Thanks, Brian. So this is the early literacy test was administered to mostly kindergartners or students that weren't yet reading independently. The STAR reading test was mostly for students in grades one to eight. There are some first graders, obviously, that were not reading independently and so they took the early literacy. If you're wondering why the numbers are a little bit off. But for the most part, most students K to eight took the STAR reading test for reading. And then that's kind of what it looked like progression-wise across the grades. So if you take a look at, there's four categories there with the highest numbers being students that are considered at or above the benchmark, which again was that 40% percentile rank. Fewer students on watch or intervention, very few students for urgent intervention. Each of those color bands represents a grade level. So you can see, for example, grade one is in red in the far left, grade eight is in the far right. And you can get a sense that across the grades, most of our students are, when you consider percentile rank, at or above benchmark. This is the same data for math. And again, if you were, if a student took an early literacy test that contained some math questions, because the presumption is if you're not reading independently, doing the math test, reading some of the questions would be hard. But the STAR math test administered to one to eight covers numeracy as well. So in here, you kind of see our results are pretty strong. Again, you have this in your book and this is what it looks like. Same data, just a different form. So again, the vast majority of our students, according to percentile rank, compare rather well to their peers. That's not really surprising to us, again, because we're used to leading the nation in terms of some of our scores. And so when we considered percentile rank and specifically when we looked at how that compared to the information that we are gathering through those other sources, we felt this is interesting and affirming in some ways of what we knew, but not necessarily useful. Because we're really interested in comparing our results to Massachusetts' results and it's hard to filter that out through the system in the percentile rank. So if you look at, the other lens that you can look through is the STAR scaled scores. And the STAR scale scores kind of give kids, as you know, adaptive software, we demonstrated it way long ago in December, I don't know if you remember it, but you take a question and then it calibrates your response. Based on your answer, it gives you something harder or easier. And students end up with a score along the learning progression in different domains. And then that enables teachers to see, okay, where's the just-right level for kids on these different domains and what's the next skill that they need to learn? It also enables you to kind of see, based on their calibration of what is the expectation at the end of the year in terms of proficiency in each of those domains. So what would students need to know in the winter administration in order to be on track to meet those end-of-year grade expectations? So we administered it for the first time in the winter. We got a scaled score for every student that showed us. Are they, how on track are they for end-of-the-year expectations, essentially? And so this is the report that we think is most helpful because you can particularly ask to see what are the outcomes for Massachusetts-specific benchmarks. So for at every grade level in reading and math, they're very articulated standards saying, you know, this is what kids need to know and be able to do. And in the software program, they spell out some of the questions that get at those those different skills. So this is not actual Shrewsbury data. I wouldn't project that for students. And it's, it would be concerning because that green, for example, represents students that are at or above benchmark. The blue strands are kids that are in the watch group. The yellow would be intervening and the red would be urgent intervention. If you look at a snapshot for Shrewsbury, you, as you know, you see very few urgent intervention students and many more students at or above benchmark. But that's the kind of report that an individual classroom teacher would get that would enable them to see, okay, where are the students in my class performing in terms of their reading skills? Who are the students that are kind of on track to meet benchmarks? Who are the students that are really close where if I invest a little bit of time, I can get them over that finish line? And have we correctly identified all the kids that really need our urgent attention? That's particularly important to me when we think about students that are transitioning. Because sometimes if you're moving from one grade level to another, time is lost getting to know that new student. And if we can be proactive about thinking, these are the students for whom we're really concerned about tracking their progress as they transition, we can do a better job of aligning supports when that happens. So the piece of this that's really exciting to me personally, and I hope that my enthusiasm will be contagious with teachers and teacher teams pretty soon, is that when you look at the, a third layer of this software, you can look at the predictive nature of it. So it will predict whether kids are going to be landing in each of the four categories on the MCAS. So for Massachusetts, we have meeting and exceeding as our target for meeting benchmarks. And then we have, you know, partially meeting and not meeting expectations. These charts will show you kind of how each grade level, again, in the aggregate, is comparing in terms of the projections. So the dark blue represents how kids actually scored in 2019 when we last had MCAS. And the green is the projections that STAR made based on the winter benchmark. Now, one of the things about the software that's really interesting is now that it's March, we're administering another round. What a student would need to demonstrate when they take the testament, is tested March, to remain in the proficient range is going to be more complicated than it would have been in in the winter because we're that much closer to test administration for MCAS. And somehow, the metrics in the program figured that out. But this is third grade. So students in grade three took the, you know, the results were very strong with 80% of our students at this grade span in the meeting or exceeding range. So projections on the STAR enable us to get a different perspective. You can see the projections are slightly lower, but pretty close in terms of the outcomes that are expected. Look at grade four. They held steady in 2019, again with nearly 80% of our students meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. The December STAR reading metrics suggest that this year only 60% of kids at this grade level are projected to score in the meeting or exceeding range. So that's an interesting point of data to kind of compare to our grade four local assessments and say, are we seeing something similar to that when we look at things like the developmental reading assessment, the DRA results, for example? And if so, can we drill down deeper and find out, are there specific skills that kids are struggling with? In other words, maybe their reading skills overall are pretty strong because they've been doing independent reading, but we haven't talked specifically about things like perspective-taking or point of view, which we know are highly tested when kids take the MCAS exam. If you look at grade five, you can see fewer kids scored in the exceeding category in ELA than in prior years. But if you compare the MCAS scores to STAR projections, you can see a 10% drop in what's projected in terms of the results for MCAS for this year. For grade six, 73% of our students scored in the meets or exceed range for English Language Arts in 2019. And STAR projections based on this initial screening data project 62% of students will score in that range in reading. In grade seven, a student, our students scored the lowest that they have in terms of reaching proficiency benchmarks at this grade span. And projections for this year, based on STAR reading data, show a similar result with fewer students projected to score in the exceeding range. Again, this test structure for grade seven is something that we've talked about in the past as maybe being a factor. But when we look at middle school grades, this is data that I really am hungry to talk to teams about. When we look at grade eight, actual MCAS results indicate that slightly more than 70% of eighth graders met or exceeded English Language Arts benchmarks. And that number is projected to drop by 16% based on the initial screening data. So in summary, when we look at the projections compared to the actual results from last year, at the last administration of MCAS, sorry, not last year, we can see that projected proficiency scores are are about fifteen percent lower than is typical. So that was a lot to digest. I'm going to switch to subjects, but if I'm talking too fast, please let me know. I'm trying to keep to the timeline. Okay. So we think about math. Again, this is the projected scores based against the actual MCAS scores, with the actual MCAS scores in the darker color and the STAR projections in the light blue. Again, overall, seventy-five percent of students were scoring in the meeting and exceeding range in grade three. And projected math scores are lower, with about a nine percent drop projected for grade three. If we look at grade four, MCAS scores held steady in 2019, and nearly eighty percent of our students met or exceeded grade level expectations. So in contrast, the December STAR math metrics suggest that this year only sixty-two percent of students are projected to score in the meeting or exceeding range. It's interesting that we saw a drop considerably for both ELA and math in grade four. And again, I think that that's not necessarily gospel, but it's really good fodder for conversation in terms of our grade-level teams. When we look at grade five, slightly fewer students scored in the exceeding range than in prior years in 2019. But a look at the MCAS scores compared to STAR projections for this year suggests that we'd see nearly a twenty percent drop in student scoring proficiency. In 2019, sixty-nine percent of students in grade six scored in the meets or exceed range on the MCAS test. And STAR projections, based on initial screening data, show that this year, ten percent fewer students at this grade level will reach proficiency. When we look at grade seven, again, grade seven scores were among the lowest in terms of percentage of students reaching proficiency benchmarks. And projections for this year are concerning, showing fifty-eight percent of students projected to meet state benchmarks in math. And finally, in grade eight, actual MCAS results indicate that sixty-eight percent of eighth graders met or exceeded benchmarks in math in 2019. That number is projected to increase slightly in the STAR forecast for math, if that initial projection is accurate, with seventy percent of students projected to meet the benchmark. And again, this is a table that you have in your report that details kind of the overall snapshot of the actual scores in 2019 compared to the projections. We can see a math, you know, range, depending on the grade, between ten and twenty percent. Lower scores projected from the STAR projections, based on the initial data. So again, a test score is a snapshot, and the data in this report is based on those initial screening data. We have another round of data coming. And so the thing about snapshots is you take them all together and you put them in an album. And hopefully, the second picture will help us tell a better story. So we're developing kind of what that, the next chapter in the story looks like. And again, we might see a projection that looks a little more favorable. We might see something more concerning, and we really don't know. But the key thing is to make sure that, as kids are welcoming back into school, that we're thinking about multiple points of assessment data, so that we can learn the system and develop that perspective I was talking about as our aspiration. But also kind of check the system and make sure that what we're learning through the assessment data dovetails with what we know from good practice and interacting with kids in school. So we will be able to track kids by standard, by skill. We'll be able to see their growth if we have enough data points. There, we'll have a second administration complete by the end of March. Some students have many more assessments, because they've been monitored in the interim. And so that will also give us a sense, eventually, of the effectiveness of some of the interventions that we put in place. Data just makes good decision-making better. And so it makes it more efficient for everyone to see the information at once. But it also presents kind of some adaptive challenges, you know, that we're more data savvy at some levels than others. We are, we have meeting structures that support dated conversations better at some levels than others, and we'll need time to kind of put those things into place. But we're really fortunate that we have a lot of educators that are highly invested in student progress and work really hard to that. And hopefully, this data will help uncover some of the really terrific practices that have been serving kids well, so that we can spread the wealth. At the same time, I want to acknowledge that there are some technical aspects of using this software. How do I get this report? What is this showing me? Is this percentile rank, or is this, you know, grade level equivalent? What is lexile level? And teachers, understandably, this has been quite a challenging year, have not been as available or patient with learning technical details. So I really applaud them in taking the first steps that we have so far. And the administrators in every building that have really committed to going forward and developing kind of a stronger data culture from a district perspective. But I think this is an initiative that's going to take some time. I'm really eager to see what the next round of data tells us about both how students are progressing, how well the system aligns with what we know from our own assessments, and also kind of what we need to do to support teachers in making this change. So I want to acknowledge the teachers that first piloted trying this in their classrooms, because one of the nice advantages of the iPad was that we could have kids take the assessment individually, under adult supervision. And all of these people helped kind of troubleshoot what that should look like, from the scripts to parent orientation and communications. And I also want to acknowledge that this is an effort that has come to implementation this year, but it started with a small group of leaders, both at the Student Support Systems Academy, working with the state and the Rennie Center, to kind of think about what were the strengths and deficits of our system, and what did we need to change in order to get closer to an MTSS model? As well as people who purposely went to some great DESI workshops on multiple-tiered systems of support. And so it's thanks to these district leaders that we were able to launch this initiative and persevere with it at a time that's really challenging. Thank you.
So this is all interesting. I think it's, this is a very important year for us to develop some sort of tool to figure out how the students are doing. But I'm curious to know whether we're, in a sense, trying, sort of measuring two things at once with the same number, in the sense that what most of us are concerned about are how are our students doing? Are they, is this education system we've had for the past year working or not? And so that's one question. But it also appears that we're correlating the results of this STAR test with the MCAS. And embedded in that is a question about, under ideal circumstances, how well does this test correlate with the MCAS? Because using nineteen in-person MCAS scores to look at twenty STAR scores is, you know, measuring the same students under vastly different circumstances.
Absolutely. And the MCAS itself, this year, we've learned since launching the initiative is going to be different. So I'm not sure it's going to help us. It's a way of looking at how ultimately this tool will be really useful. Because it's very frustrating. I mean, initially, when DESI launched the MCAS, the idea was to do two things. One, call attention to students in the margins whose lack of progress wasn't getting enough attention, frankly. Or for whom systems had lower expectations. The second piece was, was really, the idea was to give teachers feedback within the year that they could use. That never happened. We've been waiting for that to happen for a long time. So the projection around some of the domains, and that's why I started by saying that the teacher view of the system would be really different, ultimately should help with that. We should be able to see, okay, if the, if the system is aligned to replicate what the MCAS experience is. For MCAS, we can't have kids talk about or reflect on the individual test questions, or look at them and talk about them as teams. It's not okay from a, you know, security standpoint. But if we have something that's very similar, you can kind of dive into what a student is doing when they're taking that test and get some insight on what their thinking is. And I think, you know, we're at the beginning stages of that, but that's, I think, where the real promise is. But your point is very well taken.
So, so I guess the question I have is, is this is a commercial product, and they've tested it quite a bit before. And so did it come to us with a correlation with MCAS? Can we, you know, if we're looking at this test, we're left with the idea that our students' learning has dropped ten, you know, ten percent, to pick a number, or fifteen. But if, you know, that is completely dependent upon the correlation of the test with the MCAS. And I'm assuming that the company that came up with this test may have, as part of their routine quality control or whatever, developed a correlation.
Yes, they absolutely have. There's lots of reports about how they did that. Because there's different districts who have, you know, different states, actually, that have, you know, you could look at how our kids are performing relative to Wisconsin State standards, if you wanted. It's very interesting. But I think, I just talked about, in broad strokes, what are some ways we might use this as a system? From a classroom teacher's perspective, the same data gives you a sense about, you know, grade level equivalency, lexile level, you know, how is the student doing in comprehension versus word recognition? I think those are the pieces that, from a classroom perspective, are going to be really helpful, and frankly, from a parent perspective. So it's not just that I was thinking that we would use this tool to predict kind of MCAS scores, but that being able to see that sooner would be really helpful.
How long does it take to take the test for the student?
It takes about fifteen minutes in ELA. It takes less, it takes slightly more time in math. I'm hearing from the middle level that it takes more than twenty minutes if a kid is really thinking through a problem. But it's relatively quick, because they limit the number of questions, and the questions adjust based on the pattern of answers. So you never get more than a certain number of questions by design.
Nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lindsay. I have, I think, like Dr. McGee, maybe I'm, I'm, well, the MCAS is an important tool. I'm less concerned, in this particular year, with figuring out how are our kids going to do on the MCAS. We have lots of other, frankly, more pressing things to be thinking about. And so what I'd love to understand is how, how are we looking at this data, particularly for more vulnerable populations? And what is it telling us? And so what does it tell us about our special ed kids? What does it tell us about our ELL kids? What about our free and reduced lunch kids? And so are you able to, or as teacher teams, be able to look at those populations and then say, well, we have, you know, maybe higher percentage in the urgent or intervention that are in some of those subsets, and then tweak instruction in sort of, much closer to real time, obviously, than an MCAS score that you get a year after the kid has left?
Yes.
Okay. And those are, those are happening at the teacher level? Or like, when looking, looking at those vulnerable populations, are we looking sort of across the district at those and how we're doing?
So one of the advantages of a software program like this is it syncs to whatever we enter into Power School. So we can look at how subgroups are performing as part of this, not just with the MCAS projections, but with the benchmark projections and also with, by skill. So yes, that's part of the aspiration. I think that's one of the pieces that will be most valuable, and also rely on some of those team structures I was talking about. Right now, for example, at the beginning of the year, this data would be something that grade-level teams at the elementary level would dive into. But we didn't have grade-level time, because we devoted all that time to collaborative planning. So I think ideally, if we can pivot to structures that look at that, we'd have different layers of people looking at different data for different reasons. At the classroom level, you'd be looking specifically at individual results through a couple of lenses, and one of them would be looking at subgroups versus everybody. You'd be looking for different purposes, because you'd want to think, how do I fine-tune my reading instruction to target some of these just right skills for kids? As a member of a team, you'd be thinking, okay, so as a grade four team, we really need to work on, you know, understanding character perspective. Who can develop some lessons for that, and how can we collaborate? And then did what we developed for small groups actually make a difference? Because we can progress, monitor kids, and see, are they getting better at that skill that we taught them? And I think from a district perspective, it enables, you know, Meg and I to collaborate around, how are we supporting special and marginalized populations? Are there resources that we need to devote? Is there a subset of kids that needs more literacy support, for example, than we would have anticipated? And how can we pivot to provide some of that? And I think being able to see it in common and simultaneously helps us do better planning. Whereas before, we'd have to work pretty hard to pull information from systems. We still have some dilemmas. Brian and Eric Bauer have been fantastic in trying to simplify the amount of places that we store data. But there's still a lot of different touches to get at some of the questions you're raising. And I do agree, those are some of the most valuable things to ask about the data.
I think, as, I recognize this is, so this is a first touch of a system that is designed to be administered multiple times, and so we don't want to overthink or overput too much weight on any of this. But going forward, for me, I think as a school committee member, what I'd like to see is more of that, and understanding where are we as a district, and our responsibility about really paying special attention to some of those populations. And I'm happy you're doing it, but it would be great for in a future, a future presentation, to share some of that with us, to know how are we doing, right? We're a district that is, is in many ways trying to stand and say, we're really upholding the value of equity across the district. And so this feels like a really important one. Just two other quick, quick things. Will parents be getting information about how their, how their kids are doing? There's a, it sounds like there's a lot of data. And so that is, that is sometimes presents its own challenges to figure out, like, what is, what is important here? But how are you envisioning? You know, I know, as a parent, in elementary school, kiddo, like, trying to understand, okay, DRA scores. Like, what do those mean? And what is that? And that was important. But then, once you learn it, you're like, okay, now I know what to look for. It helps me find books. That helps me know, that helps me know, oh, my kid is maybe having a harder time in math while we're, while we're still in this hybrid mode. I got to make sure they're really getting that done or moving it in. Or what are you thinking about as a strategy for engaging families?
I think first, we need to make sure staff really feel comfortable with the system and that they have a chance to kind of calibrate these results against the other things that they're learning. I think we've got to first welcome kids back, as you said initially. Like, of all the things that are important, you know, in a typical, right now, projections for MCAS are not at the top of mind for anyone. But I do think, you know, one of the things that's been really valuable is the way that teachers partner with parents about sharing data and also helping them put it in perspective. Like, I'm, I, you know, I know first-grade parents worry tremendously about, so what does it mean that they're here? And first-grade teachers reassure people and say, in this year, we see kids who come in here, and they get here. They will get there. Don't worry about it. You know, students starting at a four and exiting at a twelve, and somebody says, oh, my gosh, they have to go eight levels? No, 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 they're not numbered that way. And I think that same thing will happen with this. But I think, right now, we have the dilemma of trying to find time to educate educators and do some of the technical problem-solving, and also thinking about, you know, do we want to signal that this is more important than right now it is, as we're figuring it out?
Sure. One last question, if I can, I'm sorry. It's, it obviously is designed to be administered multiple times throughout the year. And it sounds like we started with winter, and maybe in another year, another time, there's also a fall administration, and that would be sort of what we would hope for some, for some future years. I'm just, I'm struck by the idea that the fortieth percentile is like a, it's not a line in the sand I would typically draw and feel really great about as a, as a parent, as an educator. Like, that doesn't sound, but is that because it was the winter assessment? And later on, the percentile, as we move farther through the year, it's sort of the overall, okay. Then I'm done. Thank you. Makes sense.
Thank you for the presentation. You know, obviously, it's interesting to see a projection going forward, because predicting anything in the future, obviously, involves some sort of margin of error. And the more information you have, the more accurate the prediction comes. And as has been discussed and alluded to, and as you had mentioned in your report, obviously, to use one exam to project how they might perform on a test that was administered, comparing to results from two years ago. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of guesswork involved there, so certainly, everything needs to be taken with a grain of salt. I'm curious, and this may be getting at a question that you're, you're at the beginning stages of answering. So as you mentioned in your presentation, for our individual educators, this is just, the results from this assessment are just one of a large pantheon of tools that they have to assess how a student is doing. For a classroom educator in grade one, you know, with twenty-two kids, twenty-three kids, this is one piece of evidence they have on performance. But they also have every single assignment the student has done, on top of how they interact with that student day-to-day. Do you have early indications, or is this work that you're just starting to get into, feedback from educators as to where these results dovetail with what they actually see from their students? In other words, do you, is there feeling like this is in the ballpark? Have you heard pushback? I'm just curious if we have a sense of, do educators feel that the results that they've seen so far reflect what they see actually dealing with the humans that are students, as opposed to the numbers that come out of an exam?
So I think, yes, there are a number of assessments that are common. And even within a grade span, So I think, yes, there are a number of assessments that are common and, and even within a grade span um indicators of student progress that would be in use in a typical year. Then this is, this is the common one across K eight. So it, it's not going to kind of trump the interim assessments or certainly the ability to sit next to a kid and, and do some um investigating and questioning of, of student understanding in real time. Uh the advantage of this is really being able to see the same point of data through the same lens. And in terms of, of teachers, I think, you know, there's a couple of things happening. There's kind of change management, right? This is not a tool I know. I know this other tool. Um there's the aspect of, well, I'm still getting to know these kids and this has been an extraordinary year. So I'm loath to take anything that's a one-time assessment snapshot and interpret it too broadly. And I would applaud them for doing that. Um and also thinking, you know, I, I'm not so I think in some places, yes, the response has been, but we already knew that those kids were struggling. So the push from a systems perspective would be, okay, so if we've, we're not surprised that we've identified kids that are already struggling and getting supports, how can we fine tune interventions so that we see more progress? Because one of the things that I think has been hard in, in past assessments is that, you know, you, you take a test and you see a student who is struggling is not meeting the benchmark. But this would enable us to track growth so that even though they might not be at the benchmark, they're much closer than they were before. They might be in the same partially meeting bandwidth in terms of their score. But you can say, you know what, since the very first administration, they have come considerably. And they'll, so we can project that they're continuing to make growth. What we're doing to support that student is working. Might take longer for them to catch up to their peers. But I think those conversations are really important and part of the system. So um I think that the jury's still out on how educators are feeling about the system. It's um, you know, it's, it's hard work to pull them off their daily work this year to do anything new. So for me, it was a win just to get two administrations to our belt by March. Um and I think it's been a hard year to kind of assess the effectiveness of an implementation, just given all the other circumstances that are happening.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think the point you just raised about change management, I think is, is really critical to the success of this tool, right? Because I think we've seen it with other platforms that we've used, whether it be Schoology, you know, for teachers and students. And then even Power School for that matter for parents, you know, so um I think that is going to play into, uh you know, the adoption of this. But certainly seems like a start in the direction of kind of a common assessment tool across all grade spans, so.
Thanks, John. And I think, you know, as things have changed, I think when my kids were in school, I mean, it's been a long time. But with software changes and this data assessment, having, I think you, you talked about knitting the grades together is so helpful. I mean, you could have staff change. You might have a teacher leave on a maternity leave or, or something and have that data so that they're able to look at a snapshot or and, you know, looking at all students and, you know, vulnerable or those, just those middle of the road kids who sometimes are kind of, well, they're okay. But having that snapshot where that particular child is struggling. So I think having that data-driven analysis is so helpful because technology has given us that tool now. And, you know, Dale's point, you know, looking at that twenty nineteen and now we have this COVID kind of mess in between and comparing it. I think maybe starting almost fresh going forward and having this assessment is going to be very helpful. I was happy when I looked at our book this, I'm like, something kind of normal again, that we're looking at assessments and you know, moving back to where we were. The pendulum swung a little, so I was really happy to see this in here. So thank you. I think this, this is going to be a very helpful tool. I'm glad we started it before COVID because, you know, that was already, the groundwork was laid. So thank you for bringing it forward. Dr. Sawyer, any questions or comments?
I certainly want to thank Ms. Carter for the comprehensive report and for the work that she's done to uh bring this forward along with the team who she thanked at the end, people who've been doing a lot of work on this. And it has, you know, been interrupted to a degree by the pandemic, but the fact that we've persevered and been able to do uh the pieces that we think were important to, to get some data uh this year. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the next round, you know, signals in terms of that. Um I appreciate the committee's comments, you know, really being very circumspect about, you know, what this is and what it isn't. Not, not putting too much uh stock into, you know, one assessment. Um and ultimately the power will be in, as Ms. Carter so wisely said, it's about what we can do to intervene with students to help them get better and learn better. And, and you know, it's, it's feedback of one type. And we need to take it in, in the context of everything else that, that our educators are looking at and doing. But then it can be very powerful to paint a picture. And I certainly uh hear Ms. Heffernan's uh perspective around trying to look at this in a disaggregated way as we start to use it more. Uh because and that, and that frankly had been one of the benefits of the MCAS testing was to look at, as Ms. Carter said earlier, uh look at populations that in the past may have been kind of buried in the, the average and not signaling that there may be groups of students who aren't doing as well as they should uh and, and were good. So I, I think again, it's a tool. Uh we want to try to use it wisely. And I think to Mr. Wensky's point, to do this in a way as far as change management, um that is in the context of all the other demands we're placing upon our educators right now is important. And I think it's uh been very thoughtfully done. So I appreciate the report and thank you for the comments from the school committee.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our s- uh school district calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. At our meeting on March tenth, Dr. Sawyer presented a draft calendar for consideration. We have had feedback and changes have been made. And Dr. Sawyer will show us the proposed calendar for approval.
Thank you. Uh want to thank uh everyone who gave feedback and, and just, it is shown on the screen there for those who are watching at home. Um essentially, there was a proposed calendar presented back on March tenth. Um and then uh it was based on the, the feedback that we had had over the years and the work that two different calendar committees had done uh relative to how we would approach things. Um it was entirely my responsibility and oversight on my part that the recommendation to start the school year uh after Labor Day for the first time in decades to give us a little bit more breathing room about opening the new Beal School, which of course we hope to do, um is uh and didn't pay attention to the fact that uh the Rosh Hashanah, one of the high holy days of the Jewish faith, um is earlier than typical this year and actually falls on September seventh. Um and although certainly our approach has been, um and continues to be that uh we do hold school on a variety of religious holidays across many faiths um and then provide the uh accommodation for students to need to miss school for those days and provide them with opportunities to make up work, avoid major assessments and projects being due in those days. Um there really isn't a way to make up the first day of school. Uh that's just a very, very important day uh and, and to have a, a number of our students um and also a number of our staff members who would not be attending because they'd be observing their religious uh ceremonies uh wouldn't be appropriate. So we, uh as soon as we got that feedback, we took it back to the drawing board. Um and the draft that is updated for you, it's in your packet and it's on the screen, um shows that we would uh continue then with the uh starting of the school year, the week prior to Labor Day. It would be a day later than typical. Usually we start the Tuesday prior to Labor Day for students. This would start on the Wednesday prior. Uh that would allow us to have our traditional opening day on Monday, August thirtieth. Um a professional development day on the thirty-first. Uh because again, we're expecting a lot of staff changes at the elementary level with a new school, with a lot of new staff, uh with the new Beal. And then changes in staff at the other elementary schools as well as a result, because all of our schools have become K four schools and Florida's still having kindergarten for the first time. So it buys us a little extra time there at the front end to do some staff development work. Um starts school on the first for students in grades one through twelve. Um on those, that first day, traditionally our kindergarten and preschool students come with their parents to meet the teacher at some point during the day, and then they have their first regular day of school on the next day, uh which would be Thursday, the second of September. Uh we would also maintain that second professional development day in that first week um by holding what we've been doing for a number of years now, which is having the Friday of Labor Day weekend as a professional development day for staff. Um and then it would be the Labor Day weekend and then we would launch into the school year with the very long stretch of uninterrupted days for the rest of September into October. Uh we would not have the traditional professional development day on the Friday before Columbus Day, and I'll speak to that in a moment as well. Uh in terms of, uh because we're, we're uh front-loading that during this first start of the school year. Um other than that, uh the calendar is very similar or the same that uh for most of the year, as I presented two weeks ago. Uh there is a, uh the dates for the preschool and kindergarten screenings have been shifted a few days to the fifth and the sixth. Um that's to make sure that actually earlier that week uh is going to be the Muslim holiday of Eid of Fiddler. Um so we'll avoid any conflict with that. Um and then if you look into June, uh you'll see that uh June twentieth um is the observed state holiday, the new state holiday of Juneteenth, Independence Day, uh which is slated each year on June nineteenth, but uh per state law, when a state holiday falls on the Sunday, it is observed on the Monday after that. Um and so the twentieth, uh if, if all goes well and there's no snow days, uh the, we have a little bit more cushion by starting again before Labor Day with the last day of school would be June fifteenth. With snow days, uh if we have to go more than two, uh we would not go to school on Monday, the twentieth, because that will be an official state holiday and the twenty-first. Um and uh after that would be when we'd make up any more snow days, we would need to. Um so again, I apologize for the oversight on my part. Uh I believe that this, uh the leadership team reviewed this. We've run this by uh both of our employee associations and uh put it out for comment to families. Uh I have not received any feedback about the updated draft uh other than some uh messages of appreciating that we've moved the start of the school year so it doesn't conflict with Rosh Hashanah. And uh this is the recommended calendar that we'd ask for you to vote tonight so we can make it official and communicate it uh properly to the parent community and to the staff.
Any questions or comments?
Well, before I forget, one more piece, my apologies. And just to, we mentioned this two weeks ago, but just for people who might be watching for the first time, one other change. And just a language change is that uh the third Monday in October, which is the official state holiday of Columbus Day, uh there had been a number of individuals both last year and this year uh who asked for that to be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh my recommendation is not to substitute, but rather to list both holidays, the official state holiday, Columbus Day, uh but also because it has been a more, become a more prominent uh day of recognition, uh to also list it as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that's in the language that's in the center section there of the, of the calendar.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the calendar?
Just wanted to say I appreciate the quick work to rectify the situation with regard to Rosh Hashanah, and I support the new direction that we've taken in that regard.
Thank you. Anything further? Nope. Again, I thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for again, the quick response and also changing um to keep Columbus Day and slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. We did have public comment on Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I think that was a good um, you know, adding that to the calendar in response to what we had heard from the community. Nothing further? Okay, make sure you read the right language this time. May have a motion that the school committee vote to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have um our school choice vote for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. At our meeting on March tenth, we had a public hearing, which was held to satisfy the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-six, Section twelve B, which requires a public hearing prior to a potential school committee vote to not participate in or to otherwise restrict the provisions of the inter-district school choice program. And tonight, Dr. Sawyer will make his recommendation.
Thank you and appreciate it. I believe there was one email that the school committee might have received and, and I should also, in, in supporting the idea of potentially providing seats for students who do not live in Shrewsbury to be able to attend our schools through the school choice program. Uh the, uh over the course of the uh year, I, I, you know, multiple times each month, I hear uh my executive assistant, Beth McCollum, will answer phone calls from families who are inquiring from other communities, whether we're going to have school choice for the next school year. Um and as much as uh we have taken advantage of this opportunity um to fill seats that would otherwise go unfilled and be able to address some of our financial needs as a result of the money that flows to the district when that happens. Um given the very, very high level of uncertainty for next year because of our budget situation, you know, absent uh an operational override being passed sometime this spring, uh we're going to be in for some, you know, excruciating budget cuts that are going to raise class sizes. Um it would not be appropriate from my perspective to um try to determine where and when we might have some available seats available uh or open. Um and so my recommendation to the school committee is to uh not participate in inter-district school choice for next school year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Lindsay. I do appreciate the comment that we um were received from the public. And I think um our budget constraints and impact may, almost every decision that we make uh in this, in this committee, may, maybe but for our calendar, um but nearly every other one. And so I think it's, it is, it is incumbent upon us at this time. I certainly agree with Dr. Sawyer that we're not, we're not in a place where we can't manage class sizes next year with the level of uncertainty we have. Um and we've talked a lot even tonight about, you know, when the new Beal School opens, when it opens. And we still have a big hurdle to get through uh as, as a community over the next five to six weeks to make sure that that happens, that we have the sufficient funding. So at this point in time, given our finances, um I'm certainly in support and hope that it's something we can revisit in, in future years. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? There being none, okay. May have a motion that the school committee vote to not participate in inter-district school choice for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Collins will present a report with information on the federal education stimulus funding.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Uh few topics to discuss tonight. Certainly we know that our parent community, members of the community at large uh understand and uh would want to know a little bit more about the federal stimulus funding that the school district is receiving and how it might impact our operations this year and years going forward. Uh so we want to cover that topic briefly tonight. So I'm going to talk about some of the state funding that we received, some of the federal funding. And probably most importantly, um and I'll repeat this message several times, that, you know, the stimulus funding has filled a gap that would have otherwise caused a current year budget deficit in, in a very large degree. But stimulus funding does nothing to resolve our structural deficit problem, which was a pre-pandemic issue that we were having. So let me hit some of the financial facts. So in terms of the different buckets of money and the different sources of money, all school districts in the Commonwealth have been recipients of both types of funding. Uh their formula-based grants, these are not competitive necessarily. For the most part, they're formula-based, either based upon enrollment overall, student enrollment or subgroup enrollment. So for example, your poverty level. So districts that have a higher poverty level get more funding. And districts that have a lower poverty level get less funding. Um in this case, the state funding, um we have received to date two hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars uh through two separate grants. Uh the first one was a formula-based um allocation, about two hundred and nineteen thousand. And the second one, COVID nineteen health improvements in schools was in fact actually a, a kind of a special earmark, if you will, with the support of State Senator Michael Moore and State Representative Hannah Kane assisted us with that twenty-five thousand dollars in funding. Uh those funds are being used to pay for our COVID operations assistance that we have throughout, uh their wages throughout the district and also COVID surveillance testing. And we're using multiple sources of funds, given the magnitude of the surveillance testing program, um to fund that program. Uh to date, we've either spent or encumbered one hundred percent of those funds. This is another thing that folks might be hearing in the media, especially with the federal money, that the districts are getting all this money, so to speak, but they haven't used it. And so we are not in that case. We are using the dollars uh that have been provided and the ways that you've heard about already to uh help with ongoing operations or to help us reopen schools. So on the state side, um just under a quarter million dollars and a hundred percent of that is either spent or encumbered, meaning it's going to be spent on those, there, those two particular areas. In terms of federal funding, um so far, um we have one, two, three, four separate buckets of funding totaling just over two point one million dollars. Uh to date, we've either spent or encumbered one point seven five million or eighty-three percent of the, of those funds. Uh we've received the first top-line specialized uh uh funding. We've received the first top-line specialized funding for our food services program. That went to pay for supplies for the food service program, just about $11,000. The largest bucket of funding, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CBRF funding, this is 1.39 million dollars. This, this was funding based upon the so-called poverty level, where they use the Title I enrollment population to distribute these funds. We've used this funding, 100% of this funding has been either spent or committed for personal protective equipment, technology hardware, additional assets that we've talked about earlier in the year, remote technology services, tents, storage trailers, surprise for, excuse me, educational supplies for hybrid learning, additional staffing costs last summer that we needed to have people onboard to help us prepare for planning and implementing reopening, and then additional nursing and technology staff. This next bucket, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, people are referring that as SIR I, $153,000. We're using that for COVID surveillance testing. The next bucket, SIR II, we've spent just about, when I did this report, we had spent just under $200,000. We've spent much more of that since I did this, just about a week or so ago. We're using that funding for, again, COVID surveillance testing, additional technology hardware assets, again, nursing support, classroom furnishings that we spoke about earlier, and then springtime tent rentals, and additional staffing costs related for this spring reopening. So we've, again, used 83% of that funding at the time of this particular report. This, so what's kind of on the horizon? This so-called SIR III funding, or the Biden stimulus funding, has not yet been officially published. We know what it is on a national level. We've heard what it is on a state level. We're waiting for the Mass Department of Public, excuse me, Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to publish all of those allocations to each individual school district. We think that that's probably two to three weeks away, based upon the commissioner's meeting that we heard yesterday, that they're still working that application from the state with the federal government. So we'll hear in several weeks about what that next round of funding will be. The early indicators, again, this is not definitive. This is just based upon estimating factors that the Department of Education told us that we could be using as a planning range. So the range that we think that this next round will be, will be about $1.25 million. We know that this, these dollars, again, like the other dollars we've received, will be both time restricted and use restricted. This is not general fund money that they just send you a check and say, here, you know, do what you want. And so one example of that would be, in terms of the overall use, we know that the dollars that are flowing through this program will have to be spent towards COVID-related costs in general. And then secondly, we're told that 20% of that entire allocation, or in this case, probably about a quarter million dollars, will be required to be used for academic recovery programs and activities. And this is very timely, if you will, based upon Mrs. Cloud's report around student learning loss and what have you, and how we, public school districts in the Commonwealth will have some funding and requirements for funding to help with student learning loss. So if we were to get 1.25 million, a quarter million comes off the top at a minimum, just for that particular type of, of use. And, you know, again, just kind of a couple of closing comments that, you know, and this is just another way in plain language to talk about this funding, that there's really kind of two types of funding. Non-recurring funding and recurring funding. Non-recurring funding would be a gift, that somebody writes a check, a donation for a specific purpose. Those are very helpful, like the telethon that, that just ran for performing arts. Grant funding that I just talked about, the stimulus funding, this is one-time funding. And it's very valuable, and it's bridging a gap where we need it to. And then the second type of funding is recurring funding, and that is the ongoing, reliable, stable, predictable source of funding that we need year in and year out in order to provide the educational services and all the support services and operations across the entire student population. So those are the two types of funding that exist in our public finance world. And we need to understand where we are, what our situation is here, and certainly dealing with COVID. We know that, especially with the vaccine rollout and the numbers that Mrs. Freeman talked about, just in terms of our own staff, high percentage of people being vaccinated, that COVID is going to come to a close at some point, and that this COVID funding, which is, again, very helpful, will help us bridge that gap. If we didn't have that funding for all those activities that we just talked about, we would be having to go back to town meeting to request additional appropriations to, to fund all those costs. So thank goodness that we have the state and federal grants that we have. But we know that pre-pandemic, before this even occurred a year ago, that we've been talking about this structural deficit in Shrewsbury that's limited by Prop 2 and 1/2 in the amount of taxes that can be raised on an annual basis, and based upon the reports from Mr. Mizikar and all the good work that this school committee has done with the Board of Selectmen, that we know that there is agreements in place to hopefully place a ballot question on the annual town election for May 4th to resolve that problem. And I believe the latest information is that the Board of Selectmen is planning to vote this coming Friday on that very topic, and we hope that that is a positive vote, because what that will do, an operational override, will provide that recurring revenue that we need to solve our structural deficit going forward in, in the years hence. So again, stimulus funding is very helpful, but it's not a solution. And we very much need the recurring, ongoing revenue that an operational override would afford us. Otherwise, if we don't have that, we will be faced with turning back to the budget reduction plan that Dr. Sawyer presented to you in the 45-plus FTE positions that would have to be cut pre-K through 12. Stimulus funding is not going to solve that problem. So that is your update in terms of the state and federal stimulus funding. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments? John?
Yeah, no, I think, first off, thank you for the presentation. And I think it's important for the public to understand exactly what Mr. Collins explained, which, what this is and what this isn't. It is for one-time restricted use. It's not for general use. It doesn't solve our budget problems, and it actually helps a $4.9 million gap not become a $6 or $7 million gap, so.
Jason?
I just want to echo, thank Mr. Collins for the presentation, echo what he has said, echo what Mr. Wensky has said, and really echo what this committee has said all along. We have a structural funding issue. We have a longstanding structural funding issue that this committee has been talking about for a number of years, where the driven, the cost drivers on this district are driving our expenses up faster than revenues can meet pace, and the solution to that, for some, it may be simply a reduction of services, but that degrades the quality of the educational program. It's, it's obvious, and we have a structural issue. One-time funding is not going to solve that. And I know that there are, sometimes, there can be a lot of attention on one-time solutions like stimulus funding. There can be a lot of attention on one-time costs, like the opening of the Beal School. But this is not a one-time problem, and it will not be fixed with a one-time solution.
Lindsay?
I want to also just note, I thank you very much, Mr. Collins, that the exact same conversation is happening at the municipal level right now around similar dollars that will go to the town. And I heard Mr. Mizikar loud and clearly last night at their meeting, talk about, said, you could have pulled from some of your slides, right, about what, what is recurring and what, what is not, and what we can spend these things on and what we cannot. So that structural deficit, our, our federal dollars, while we appreciate them, are, are not the savior that, that anyone might be hoping that they are.
Absolutely. And I, you know, echoing that, Lindsay, the discussion the Board of Selectmen had last night to clarify for the public about, you know, recurring expenses and one-time use of stimulus funds is something that really has to be, you know, we, we have to keep this discussion going with the public because what we have is a budget crisis, and we need to have our gap in the municipal gap, we need to have this filled with an override, but we also need to start fixing this long-term problem of a structural deficit. And, you know, this override stabilization fund model that's out there is going to start this process of, of solution. And, you know, there is misinformation in the public that the stimulus funding is the solution, and we know it's not the solution. So I, you know, thank you for presenting it. I know the Board of Selectmen had their discussion about it last night. There is a vote on Friday, I believe they're meeting at 4:00 PM, to decide whether or not the override will be placed on the May ballot. But thank you for putting this forward. And again, we need to keep this conversation going because stimulus money, and again, we don't know how much it is, we don't know what the guidelines are, but we know it is not for recurring revenue, which would, which is what we need as a school department. Dr. Sawyer, any questions or comments?
I think it's all been said very well by Mr. Collins and the committee members. And again, it's a, it's a, although complex in terms of how it's administered, it's a simple proposition. You know, one-time money does not fix a recurring problem. So appreciate the commentary, and we'll continue to obviously be transparent in our reporting on how we use these funds to support the work that we have to do that's above and beyond anything we would normally do, and that's the purpose of this, receiving these kinds of funding.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to talk about fees and tuitions for 2021-2022 school year. We are not going to vote on those until our April 7th meeting, after we receive, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will see feedback from the committee. So we'll turn to this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. So we're probably a little bit, a few weeks later than we normally would be in terms of presenting this information, but we're going to just provide some of the basic information around the fee-based revenue programs that we have in the district. And as you mentioned, that this is a kind of a setup, if you will, an informational for an intended and scheduled vote on April 7th by the school committee to vote on what next year's fees and tuitions will be for the various programs. It's important that the school committee take the vote at that particular time so that we can prepare all the information that we need to in order to communicate with our parent community for all those programs in advance. Some of the assumptions, just in terms of budget development, and what's going on with the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, is that we are hopeful, again, based upon the agreements that were made previously, in that there is a intended time to schedule a vote by the Board of Selectmen on Friday for an override, that that was taken into consideration here as well, and that the fiscal '22 operating budget, at the time it was prepared last fall, assumed no change in the fee levels, because that's our usual and customary kind of way of preparing the budget. And then as we get to this particular point in the budget cycle, you know, if the committee would want to raise fees, then that would impact our operating budget, usually making some savings, if you will. So the assumption right now is, the budget assumption that Dr. Sawyer presented to you in terms of the operating budget was no change in the fees, just as a baseline. This is some data about the various programs and what the current fee amounts are. You know, bus fees at $320 per year. Of course, they were waived this year due to the unusual school calendar, having fewer days, and also the hybrid model, and the fact that we're now changing the modality back into full is just way too complicated to try to even communicate or, or collect on that kind of basis. The athletic fee that was voted previously for this year was $325, but again, because of the modified schedule, going from three seasons to four and having shortened seasons, the school committee adjusted that to a $275 fee for this year only. So the assumption for next year is that it goes back up to the $325. Sherwood activity is $55 per year, Oak is 75, the athletic fee for Oak is 100, high school student activity fee, $110, and then you can see the music fees there. All those things are estimated for fiscal '22 to generate just over $1.3 million in fee revenue from all of our parent community and students. Next slide. And then just some comparison fee data. This is one-year-old because it's just such an unusual year that it really didn't make sense to try to collect current year data, because everything is just so different. But just in terms of our local community, you can see what some other communities are charging for the busing fee. We're on the high end of that particular group. And then in terms of athletic fee, again, this is not new information for the school committee, that we're on the higher end of that as well, in terms of the annual, or excuse me, per sport athletic fee. And then moving to full-day kindergarten, you know, as part of your five-year plan in anticipation of opening up the new Beal School and offering full-day kindergarten to all of our students, that it would be done so with no tuition, and that we were in a very small minority of communities that still charge tuition for full-day kindergarten. And so you had a plan to step that down every year, a little bit at a time, so that didn't create this big funding cliff. And so the assumption for fiscal '22 is, is that there is no tuition charge for full-day kindergarten next year. And, you know, the other piece of this is that, just for informational purposes, that if the committee were to institute a, a charge of what would be $1,200 as an example, that that would raise potentially in the range of $220,000 to $265,000, depending on the full-day kindergarten enrollment. So that's just kind of a, and again, that, in context, was provided to you and to other boards as a way to also just demonstrate that, you know, charging a tuition for full-day kindergarten students doesn't solve a structural deficit problem. This would be a very small amount in the context of a $4.9 million gap, and again, wouldn't be likely something that you would want to continue on forward anyway, but it was just done as an example. The preschool tuition rates, you can see here, vary by number of days per week, and you can see what the annual tuition amounts are there, and that the total amount budgeted for fiscal '22 is $450,000. Those funds go to offset teacher salaries. And just in terms of kind of recapping where we are, you know this, that we are dependent on, and have been, on the tuitions and user fees to operate all these programs and co-curricular programs and activities and services. And that, you know, the rationale to keep, or a rationale to keep tuitions and user fee amounts the same for fiscal '22 and not raise them, other than eliminating, you know, the full-day kindergarten tuition, is because our parents will likely also, hopefully, be presented with an operational override question. And so, you know, it wouldn't make sense, if you will, to say, you know, vote for the override, but then also at the same time raise the fees for, for schools. So that would be one rationale to keep them the same. And again, just in, in closing, Dr. Sawyer would make his recommendation to you at your next meeting on April 7th. And that is all I have for you this evening on that, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on those? Do you? John?
Yeah, just, and we're, we charge quite a few fees in this district. I mean, it's, it's, it's not news, you know, and I, I agree, I don't think we should be solving our budget gap problems by increasing fees. It's one of the few levers we have as school committee members, but when you look at the, you know, the impact, it's just, you know, and, and the fact that we, you know, we just shouldn't be, you know... be, you know, looking at even full-day kindergarten, the whole objective of that plan to kind of reduce that fee to get to free full-day K was a promise that was made at the beginning of the Beal School construction, or the plan. So I would not be in favor of that.
Jason?
Well, I mean, I've made this comment pretty much twice a year, every year since I've been on the school committee, and so I almost hesitate to say it again, but in the context of the town's financial situation, and I know that we have a lot of folks who are becoming involved and paying attention, perhaps for the first time in municipal government and municipal finance, this is one of the most over-feed districts in the state. We have not only pulled that lever, we pulled every lever on the panel. Everything that we, just about everything that we can feed for, we do feed for. Mr. Collins went through in detail some of the challenges associated with that revenue in addition to being encumbered. We all saw this year, the fact that when you have fees, what happens when the unexpected happens and you're not able to deliver the service? Well, the revenue is connected to the service, and if the service goes away, the revenue does as well. Fees are not going to solve the problem that this district has. Frankly, every year that we have to vote on these fees as school committee members, I regret fees being at the level that they are. But fees is a well that we have tapped to the point where it's just about dry.
Absolutely. Lindsay?
I certainly agree with Mr. Pallett. I think our rate of fees, frankly, it's too high, it's unsustainable. I think it's inappropriate, given the community that we have, and I really worry about, while I appreciate, and I am quite confident, that our teachers and our administrators and our coaches, if they find out that there are students who need assistance, try their best to make sure that the barriers are removed for students to participate in things such as athletics. And I also know that students have pride, and that very well these fees may get in the way of students participating. And what I think are fundamentally part of an educational service, athletics and music and other such programs, and so when you have to have, you know, a fee to participate in drama, what does that do to having a young person want to participate in those? So I certainly am not for the raising of any fees. I look forward to Dr. Sawyer's recommendation in a few weeks' time, and I hope that we can figure out a way to reverse course on how far we've gone. I don't, I don't like being at the head of this pack. I don't think it reflects well on us as a, as a community.
And we've become overly dependent on them by necessity. We've had to in order to not reduce in other parts of the budget over time, and it's unfortunate. And we are one of the highest, if not the highest in the state, as we've seen, for most of these fees. So no one likes them, but it's become that necessity. And I think that's when people think, well, you know, you can reduce, you can, well, we feed to death, and it becomes that cost saturation point. And I think we've reached that in many instances. So people can provide additional comment to us, to the school committee, and we will vote on the 7th. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
No, I certainly hear, we have a message from the school committee, and we'll look forward to providing a recommendation and the vote. But again, it's not, it's, fees are higher than we'd like them to be, and I think that it's clearly, you know, even an adjustment wouldn't solve the problem. And if families are being asked, you know, if the Board of Selectmen sees fit to put a question on the ballot, which I hope they do, you know, families are going to be asked to be paying more for education and town services. So, you know, barring anything unusual, you can expect my recommendation in two weeks will be not to change anything and to move forward with eliminating the full-day kindergarten tuition, under the presumption that we'll be opening the new Beal School. We'll have to revisit that if that is not possible.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have our minutes from our school committee meeting held on March 10th, 2021, and the school committee workshop held on March 15th, 2021.
Mrs. Fritz, if we could actually, I may have just noticed, and I apologize for not catching this earlier, I may have just noticed a typographical error, I'm not sure. Could we hold the March 10th minutes until our next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. And I will investigate that and get back to the Secretary and Ms. McCollum.
Sure. So we will have our minutes from the school committee workshop held on March 15th, 2021.
No objections there.
No objections there, that's good. Okay, so those can be marked as accepted, as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or conduct negotiations with non-union personnel. Purpose two, non-represented administrators, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May have a motion that we adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Rule call, vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Myself?